Visiting and seeing what has happened here in Los Angeles.
When you're having a whale of a time, it means you're having a lot of fun. That's exactly what the attendees of the 2023 Cabrillo Marine Aquarium Whale Fiesta had. Families and their kids could learn about marine wildlife and preservation, collect pins, and sign up for a whale-watching boat trip. Check it out.
What we're enjoying is the Whale Fiesta. We've invited all the families in the area, everybody to come on out and learn about the ocean, learn about the ocean environment, learn about whales and other mammals, and particularly ocean sustainability.
We've been celebrating Whale Fiesta for over 50 years. It's basically a celebration of getting people to actively engage with the cetaceans that we have right off the coast here in Southern California. So it's an introduction to all the different animals that they might be able to see if they go whale-watching on one of our whale-watch boats.
Southern California is one of the best places to see whales anywhere in the world. We have a variety of whale species that are visiting our coastline throughout the year. We traditionally were thought of as a place to see gray whales while they migrate along the coast during the winter and early spring. But the rest of the year, summer and fall, is a great time to see humpback whales, like the one behind me, as well as the largest whale in the world, the blue whale, which can be seen here feeding during the summer and fall months.
We have these opportunities on beautiful days like this to invite families out, and people are just happy and eager to be together and also to be in environments where we can learn about things like how we affect the ocean, how we can protect the ocean, to learn about the mammals and the animals all around us.
It's really what our staff and our facility was meant to do in engaging so many people. So it's just a joy for us to be able to have our exhibitors and all of our guests returning here to the aquarium, as well as returning out on our whale-watch boats. Visit us at cabriomarineaquarium.org or cabriowailwatch.org, where you can find out specifically about becoming a volunteer with me. A member of the Los Angeles City Council since 2017, Councilwoman Monica Rodriguez represents the residents of CD7. For 2023, she wants to make sure the line of communication with her constituents is seamless and that the needs of her community are well-served. With many goals and projects underway, she is hopeful about what lies ahead. Take a look.
My goals for 2023 are no different than the goals that I set when I took office in 2017, and that is to make sure that we have a high-functioning city government that is responsive to the needs of the 7th Council District and the citizens of Los Angeles. It's critically important that we make sure that our service delivery is impeccable and timely, to making sure that we're getting those critical infrastructure investments, particularly in districts like mine, where we have seen longstanding shortages of those types of critical investments, making sure that we are doing everything that we need to do to create the very best environment for young families in my community and throughout the city of Los Angeles to enjoy the city. I'm very excited that this year, we have projects that we had begun planning in my first term now coming to fruition. And so we're going to see a great deal more investments in our local parks. We've got a dog park and a huge community park in somewhere that's about to be opening. We've got housing for veterans experiencing homelessness and families. So we see a lot of the projects that we had started incubating early in the last few years now coming to fruition, even with the COVID delays. So I'm very excited about some of the opportunities, the ribbon cuttings that we're going to be having in the 7th District. So in CD7, we are actually bringing in additional units of permanent supportive housing and interim housing solutions. Since taking office and through one of the most recent project Home Key locations, we are now at our 500th units of housing, with two more slated to come online. So we're continuing to make progress in this area. We've launched a very successful RV pilot to accelerate the disposition of RVs and getting individuals placed. And so I'm currently embarking on an effort to make that a citywide solution, and I look forward to continuing to deliver more of those successes and programmatic results, not just in the 7th District but across the city of Los Angeles. The Youth Ambassador Program is part of the comprehensive approach that we're taking to address homelessness. It's critical to recognize that the pipelines to homelessness can be derived in so many different ways, from individuals that are experiencing mental health to emancipated youth from the foster care system. And so making sure that we are addressing the needs of young people that are experiencing homelessness is critical, which is why I've worked with our Youth Development Department to come up with this Youth Ambassador Program that thankfully, I'm really proud, was successful in securing federal dollars with the help of Congressman Adam Schiff to make this program a reality here in the city of Los Angeles. So I want to invite the public to always reach out to my office. We are here to serve. You can call my office at (213) 473-7007, or go to our website at monicarodriguez.org.
One of our country's most popular sports, baseball, didn't represent All Americans until recently. Through the Barriers Breakers Exhibit, visitors can learn about the stars of the Negro Baseball Leagues and the evolution of racial justice through the lens of this classic sport. Let's hear the story.
This exhibit is from the Negro League Baseball Museum in Kansas City, Missouri. It celebrates African-American players who participated in the Negro Leagues because the opportunity from our major league baseball wasn't there for these players.
I'm a baseball fan. I grew up playing Little League baseball in the city. I was in two leagues, one at Harvard Park in the morning, and later in the afternoon, I went to Van Ness Park. These are not only black ballplayers, but they're brown ballplayers, players from Cuba, players from Mexico, from the Caribbean. They were discriminated against because of their color, merely because of their color, not because of their ability, not because of their skills. And so when they were able to break into the major leagues, I think it really demonstrated the importance of persistence, the importance of hard work, of working together, and of not giving up. And I think all of these players represent that.
What we have here is an amazing exhibit. What you see along the walls here is a part of our photo collection here at Central Library. The other component of the exhibit that we're really excited to feature is the QR codes that's located along the panels. There's interviews, they can engage, it's interactive. It's a really unique feature at the school, and all you need is a phone to do it. It's a part of our history, it's American history. It was a dark time in history. However, these players and that organization shined a light where it wasn't shown. Our young people need to know about this history. Adults who aren't familiar with this history should know about it, and having it here at the library is a wonderful opportunity.
We hope that our young people will come out to not just see the exhibit, but come to the library. You know, this is an extraordinary resource in our community. I remember growing up in the Normandy-Vernon area and went to Vermont Square. That was my library.
I come from a historically black college, and our motto is "I'll Find a Way or Make One." These players and this organization exemplifies that. This exhibit is absolutely free, is here at Central Library downtown. We're open seven days a week. The public is welcome to join us and check it out. It's a magnificent exhibit that highlights the triumphs, the perseverance, and the sheer talent of these players.
The city of Los Angeles continues their celebration of African-American Heritage Month with a special live event featuring renowned activist artist Betty Sarr at the Pico House in El Pueblo. The evening will include a screening of a new documentary on Sarr, Ready to Be a Warrior, and a Q&amp;A with the artist afterward. Still creating well into her 90s, Sarr is known for her contributions to the Black Arts Movement in the 1970s, taking on myths and stereotypes about race and femininity. Her work challenges ideas of African-Americans with artwork that confronts American racism. See Betty Sarr: Ready to Be a Warrior at the historic Pico House, February 16 at 6:00 PM. Admission is free, however, an RSVP is required. Call (323) 871-5801 to reserve your seat or log on to laevent RSVP.com. The Northridge Branch Library invites kids to write your own little golden biography book. Join Bite-Sized Histories as author Cherie L. Smith gives you her tips for writing nonfiction for young readers. Smith is an award-winning author of titles like What is the Civil Rights Movement and Who Were the Tuskegee Airmen? She'll help you turn your own tales into a little golden book-style bite-sized history of your own. Come with a tale-to-tale and a willingness to write, draw, and have some fun learning. Bite-Sized Histories with Cherie L. Smith happens at the Northridge Branch Library Saturday, February 18 at 1:00 PM. For details, visit lapl.org/events. Don't miss the Sixth Annual Black History Month Festival at the newly renovated Michelle and Barack Obama Sports Complex. Open Arms Food Pantry and Resource Center is proud to host this year's event, which will focus on health and wellness. Guest speakers will talk in depth on topics that affect the mind and body within the African-American community. All in attendance will find plenty of resources available to improve individual lifestyle, with a special focus on increasing literature in the community. And of course, there'll be plenty of shopping, food, and entertainment. The Sixth Annual L.A. Black History Month Festival happens from 11:00 AM to 6:00 PM on Sunday, February 19. For more information, log on to culturela.org/events. And that's a look at some things to do.
And that's it for this edition. I'm Natalia Bobao, and from all of us here at LA This Week, thank you so much for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org, and we're also on Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, and YouTube. See you next time for more LA This Week.
Everyone, and welcome to today's meeting of your Los Angeles City Council. Today is Wednesday, February 15, 2023. I'm Paul Krikorian, President of the City Council, and as permitted under Assembly Bill 361, public comment will be taken today both by teleconference and here in council chambers. So I thank everybody who has come down to the chambers or is on the phone wishing to comment to the council. With that, it looks like we are ready to begin today's meeting. So, Mr. Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
Yes, Mr. President. Bloomingfield, DeLeon, Harris Dawson, Hernandez, Hutt, Krikorian, Lee, McCosker, Park, Price, Ramon, Rodriguez, Soto Martinez, Yaroslavsky, 11 members present in the court, Mr. President.
Very good. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes of February 14, 2023.
Councilmember Price moves. Councilmember Hutt seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Councilmember Park moves. Councilmember Lee seconds, next.
Mr. President, there's a request to continue Item 11 to Wednesday, February 22, 2023.
Okay, without objection. That'll be the order. What's next, Mr. Clerk?
Items 1 through 21 are items for which public hearings have been held. The Budget, Finance, and Innovation Committee report has been submitted for Item 10 and uploaded to Council File Number 23-0112. Items 23, 22, and 23 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Community impact statements have been submitted by the Dalray Neighborhood Council and the Westchester Playa Neighborhood Council for Item 23. Items 24 through 26 are closed-session items considered by the Budget, Finance, and Innovation Committee. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Very good. Thank you, members. Those matters are now before us. Do any members wish to call any items special? Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to call Items 14 and 15 special for comment.
Very well. Mr. Harris Dawson.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to call Item 21 special for an amendment, and Items 22 and 23 for a separate vote.
Okay, that'll be the order. Councilmember Park.
I'd also like to call 23 special-
I'd also like to call twenty-three special for an amendment.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Park, hold on a second. There is shouting out going out in the audience. That is not permitted and will not be tolerated because it distracts us from doing our business. Please be silent while we can conduct our business. Please be silent. This is not a conversation. Have a seat and be silent. Okay, the sergeants have instructed that you're excluded from the meeting pursuant to Council Rule seven. You shouldn't be here. So have a good day. You need to go. I'm sorry, you need to go pursuant to our council rules. Everybody will follow our council rules, or you won't be participating in this meeting. That's the way it's gonna be. I'm sorry. Councilmember Park, just stand down for a moment while we address this.
Ms. Lewis?
You as well, I'm sorry, sit down and be silent, or you'll be excluded as well.
So the lady in the collar green jacket?
I am if you continue speaking. Otherwise, sit down. You'll have a chance to speak during public comment. Sit down and be silent otherwise. Councilmember Park.
Yes, Council President, thank you. I'd also like to call item twenty-three special for an amendment. The amendment is being circulated, and the city attorney has a copy to read into the record.
Very good. Mr. City Attorney, can you please do so?
Yeah, and I also have one for Mr. Harris Dawson.
Amendment on twenty-one.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. You need to be silent, or you'll be excluded from this meeting.
Okay. So I've got two amendments to read out. I will start with Mr. Harris Dawson, since he was first. Okay. So this is to amend item twenty-one to adopt the following recommendations in lieu of the recommendations contained in the committee report. One, instruct the city administrative officer with assistance from the Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority, LSA, to report to the council within sixty days with the following. A, recommendations for creating a standardized RFP process and/or other processes for privately owned parcels and buildings to be considered for development or acquisition as interim housing sites, along with options for funding the RFP. That is a request for proposal. B, recommendations for creating a standardized site review process for privately owned parcels and buildings to be considered for development or acquisition as interim housing sites. And two, instruct the planning department and the housing department and request the city attorney to provide assistance to the CAO and LSA, presented by Mr. Harris Dawson. And I believe the seconder is Ms. Rahman. Thank you for confirming. Okay. Now I will read Councilwoman Parks's motion. And this is item twenty-three. And the motion is that the item be amended to add the following recommendations. One, remove Venice Beach Recreation Center and Boardwalk at eighteen-hundred Oceanfront Walk from the list of locations and add the following list of locations. A, within a five-hundred-foot radius of the intersection of Ozone Avenue slash Oceanfront Walk Public Park. B, within a five-hundred-foot radius of the intersection of Windward Avenue slash Oceanfront Walk Public Park. C, within a five-hundred-foot radius of the intersection of Washington Boulevard slash Oceanfront Walk, a public park. And D, Mar Vista Recreation Center at one-one-four-three-zero Woodbine Street in Los Angeles, a public park, presented by Councilwoman Parks and seconded by... Yes, thank you, Mr. Price.
Okay. Are there any other specials, members? Members, item thirteen on today's agenda, the municipal lobbying ordinance, has had considerable stakeholder input since it was reported out of committee. So in order to accommodate some of that stakeholder input and address some of the issues that have been raised, I'd like to re-refer that back to the Ad hoc Committee on Governance Reform for further consideration. So without objection, that'll be the order. All right. Mr. Clerk, do we have anything else then before us that we can vote on?
Mr. President, the council may now vote on items one through ten, twelve, and sixteen through twenty.
All right. If there are no members wishing to be heard, let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
Twelve ayes.
Very good. Are we prepared then next to go to presentations? Okay, I apologize. Items twenty-four through twenty-six were matters scheduled for closed session. Mr. Blumenfeld, do you have any recommendations on those matters?
They were considered by the Budget Committee, and we recommend eye votes on these matters.
Very good. So those items can be taken up in open session unless members have any questions or concerns or wish to hold any of them special. I see no members so indicating, so on those items, let's go ahead and open the roll. Oh, I'm sorry, we need to read them in. Go ahead and read them in, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. For item twenty-four, in the case entitled Helene Berger and Kenneth Berger versus City of Los Angeles et al., there is a recommendation to expend up to three hundred thousand dollars in settlement. For item twenty-five, in the case entitled Amal Pizarro Vergara versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to reject the plaintiff's offer of settlement. For item twenty-six, in the case entitled Katie Van Schoonaveld versus City of Los Angeles et al., there is a recommendation to reject the plaintiff's offer of settlement.
Very good. Those items are now before us. Let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you very much. So now, we are prepared to go to our special presentation, and I'd like to call upon Councilmember Price, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, friends, neighbors, in furtherance of our Black History Month celebration in the city, I invite you to join with me and Councilwoman Heather Hutt, Councilman Dawson, as we recognize and welcome the family of our honoree, Carlotta Armande Spears Bass, our special awardee today. We also want to acknowledge the USC School of Journalism that we'll hear from in a few minutes. Now, our honoree, Carlotta Bass, is no relation to our mayor, but she certainly is a pioneer and an inspirational source, source and resource in our community for many years. Born February fourteenth, eighteen seventy-four, born today. In fact, she had an early education in Rhode Island and moved to California, Los Angeles, in fact, at the age of thirty-six. In nineteen, in nineteen-ten, she transferred her subscription-selling skills to a black paper here in Los Angeles called The Eagle, located, in fact, in my district on Forty, Fortieth and Central Avenue. When the owner passed away, she assumed ownership and became a real pioneer as a female publisher, not just in our city but in the country. The purpose of The California Eagle was clear, to discuss the wrongs of society and to serve as a source of information and inspiration to the Black community. She was well thought of and well accepted. The paper was published, she was the publisher of the paper from nineteen-twelve to nineteen fifty-one. I mentioned, located on Central Avenue, and it fought all kinds of issues that impacted the community, including those around restrictive housing covenants, police brutality, the revival of the Ku Klux Klan, and more. During its heyday, the California Eagle's circulation was about sixty thousand. In fact, that made it the largest Black newspaper west of Chicago. And so she was a real pioneer in, on many fronts, including she was credited for pioneering multi-ethnic politics as an advocate for Asian-American and Mexican-American civil rights in the forties. She really stood out. And her efforts were not limited to journalism. She was a political activist running for office as well. In nineteen forty, the Republican Party chose her as the Western Regional Director of Wendell Wilkie's campaign. Three years later, she became the first African-American grand jury member in LA County, the first. Also in forty-three, she led a group of Black leaders to the office of then-mayor Fletcher Byron to, and demanded expansion of the Mayor's Committee on American Unity, more public meetings, and she did efforts to promote racial harmony in our city. As I said, she was a real sheroe. Some would say a bad, the kids today call her a bad mamajama. She made, she made things, she made things work. She ran for city council in the forties using the song entitled "Don't Fence Me In" to highlight her opposition to housing discrimination. She was a candidate on the progressive. She disdained the Republicans, disdained Democrats, thought they were of no use, and became a progressive. And in fact, in fifty-two, was on the progressive ballot as vice president. Again, the first African-American woman running for national office. In the, in the years that followed, she continued being a real source of inspiration, a source of innovation, a strong advocate for making things right and always working for the underdog. And so it's with a great deal of honor and pride that we acknowledge Carlotta Bass for her achievements, that we recognize her as being a real sheroe in our community, both locally and nationally. And so her, her efforts certainly live on. I was excited yesterday to join the Department of Journalism over at USC, and we opened the Carlotta Bass Journalism, I'm sorry, the Carlotta Bass Journalism and Justice Lab as an indication of the commitment that she has made over the years and the inspiration she will provide for her, for the community. We have members of her family that are here, and I'd like to ask them to just come up and say a few words about her legacy. Then we'll hear from Dr. Richardson from the USC School of Journalism.
Good morning, members of Los Angeles City Council, members of the public. My name is Miki Wozenkroft. My grandmother, seated Muriel Spears Tinsley, recently turned one hundred, and she is... She is our family's closest living memory of our dear Aunt Charlotte. And I just wanted to say thank you so much to Dr. Richardson for all of the work that she's done with the recognition at USC, as well as to Councilwoman Price. Charlotte has always been a bit of a family legend for us, a woman that we all admired for her tenacity, her fearlessness, her constant advocacy for all people of color, both in the city of Los Angeles and nationally. We are all famously aware that she was followed by the FBI and remained on the watch list until her death. And that was something that, as women in our family, we have been extremely proud of. I recently gave birth to a little girl, and I was pregnant at the time that the presidential elections were happening. And so knowing that this part of our family legacy was in place and the fruition of having a female vice president was actually happening in the lifetime of myself and my daughter was something that brought great pride and joy. And with that, we are so humbly grateful for the recognition by USC, as well as for the recognition of City Council. And we're all quite pleased to actually have something else to celebrate on February fourteenth for Charlotte Bass Day. So thank you again so much. And our newly acquainted extended family are all very happy to be here. Thank you so much.
Good morning. We say newly acquainted because Charlotte actually didn't have any kids, but she had ten brothers and sisters. And so we are the descendants of one of the sisters. They are the descendants of one of the brothers, and we actually just met at the opening of the lab, which was really incredible. So Charlotte Bass and I never met, but we share something, a common thread that links us together. My name is Morgan Charlotte Fikes, but as a child, I never told anyone my middle name. It was the one piece of my name that was different, that was clearly Black. I wanted to just be Charlotte. I didn't understand the power of being different, so my mother, being the wise woman that she is, made me read up on my namesake, my great-great-grand aunt Charlotte Amanda Spears Bass. That first book report had a far-reaching ripple and forever changed how I see myself. Charlotte helped me learn to love myself, and for that, I will always be grateful. A decade ago, on my first blog, DC Fun Employment, I revisited the subject of my Aunt Charlotte and her life and story. I dug deeper into who she was and what she stood for. What blew, what blew me away was how I am constantly and continuously learning more about the incredible force that she was. Charlotte was the first Black woman to run for vice president, a crusading journalist, and a major African-American activist on the West Coast through the first half of the twentieth century. She stands among the most influential African-Americans in that century, and I am just a little older than she was when she first moved to Los Angeles, the city that became her home. Aunt Charlotte crawled so that Shirley Chisholm could walk and so that Kamala Harris could run and win. Her campaign slogan was "Win or Lose, We Win By Raising the Issues", which is something we could use more of today. My mother, Shereen, worked at the predecessor to the African-American Museum with the Smithsonian for twenty years while I was growing up. It was a magical place that taught me that history can be immortal. During my first visit to the African-American Museum, I found a plaque honoring Charlotte's legacy, and it moved me to tears, and I was excited to know that more people would learn about her life. I decided to revisit our history again as I realized how many parallels there are in our lives. And I realized that while that plaque is wonderful, there is so much more to Charlotte's history. So I began researching and digging into her life. I got a copy of her book and researched her will, and will be heading actually this week to the Southern California Library to go through their archives. About two weeks into my research in two thousand seventeen, I got an email from the California Press Foundation that Charlotte would be receiving a Hall of Fame award and did I know any living relatives since she didn't have any children. They found me because of that first piece I wrote on DC Fun Employment. So I went to California, I accepted the award, and went to visit my grandma, Charlotte Colley, who has since passed but would be delighted by all of this, so that I could learn more about great Aunt Charlotte. So it is full circle to be here now, celebrating her proclamation and securing her legacy in LA and meeting new members of my family. These two women make me proud to be Charlotte and to stand up here before you carrying on her legacy with honor. Thank you to the city of LA for this proclamation. Thank you, Mr. Price, for putting this all together. And thank you, Dr. Richardson, Mrs. Genong, and USC for opening their lab and this work for this recognition. Have a good day.
Well, you know, I can't take credit for bringing this honor to the Bass family. The real power behind the throne has been Dr. Richardson from USC School of Annenberg. This is her brainchild. She is a force in her own right, and I'm happy to bring her to the stage this time. Dr. Richardson.
Thank you, Councilman Price, and thank you to the City Council for agreeing to celebrate Charlotte Bass with us. Charlotte Bass believed deeply in democracy and the democratic process. She believed in everything that goes on in this building, and she ran for the highest office in the land because she believed so much in it. And a lot of what my teaching surrounds really tries to live up to what Toni Morrison said. If there is a book that you want to read and it has not yet been written, then you must write it. And I want to paraphrase, if there's a holiday you want to celebrate and it's not yet been created, then you gotta create it. And I thank you all for allowing us to do that. And the journalism program at USC is really proud to elevate this hidden figure of journalism so that she's not erased and that she's remembered every year from now on. So thank you so much for this, and thank you, Councilwoman Price. Thank you to the Bass family, especially Ms. Muriel, who just turned a hundred years young and agreed to be here today, flying all the way from Rhode Island. Thank you so much.
That concludes our presentation. Just again, the reminder of the importance of making black history every day. And so we're just so proud that we could acknowledge a real sheroe in, in our community and in our country, Charlotte Bass. She continues to set the pace and to provide a source of inspiration for not just journalists, but for community activists and for political leaders as well. So congratulations to the family.
Thank you very much, Mr. Price. I'd like to call in Councilmember Harris Dawson, please.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Price, Ms. Hutt, the Bass family, and USC. We're extremely proud that you took the time to share in this celebration with us of one of our leading angels in the City of Angels, Ms. Charlotte Bass. A few things to add to all the stories, because I never got to meet Ms. Bass, but I felt like I grew up on her stories and her, on her legacy, and all the stories about the building on Eighth and Wall, where the first floor was retail and a community center, the second floor was the printing press for the paper, and the third floor was a community center, where there are lots of, if you go through the history of Los Angeles, particularly black Los Angeles, you're going to see a lot of photos from the Eighth and Wall Community Center that, that Ms. Bass owned and helped run. There's a famous one of our, our, our city's most storied mayor in a very young, very slim, in his full LAPD regalia, a very young Tom Bradley. And what is particular about the picture is, Tom Bradley is in a picture shaking the hand of Paul Robeson on one side and Charlotte Bass on the other side, two people who were being followed by the FBI at that moment because of their political activity. It's just, it, it's a moving photo because it talks about what's possible in Los Angeles and what we can do together and how we can talk across our disagreements and, and the gulfs and ideology. And I, again, I think we're all very proud to stand here and not just declare it Charlotte Bass Day, but declare it on a day when we have more women on the Los Angeles City Council than we've ever had. We've got Asian-Americans on the City Council, we've got Latino-Americans on the City Council, we've got black folks on the City Council, which was not the case when she got to Los Angeles. Oh, and by the way, there's a black woman named Bass sitting in the mayor's seat right now. And so we say Happy Charlotte Bass Day, and thank you all for sharing in the celebration with us.
Thank you very much, councilmembers. Councilmember Hutt.
Yeah, really quickly, I just want to echo my colleagues. And isn't it interesting that the two women of color that ran for Vice President came from California? Isn't that amazing? Look what California produces. Isn't it interesting that the first woman that ran for Vice President's name is Bass and our mayor's name is Bass? Like, there's so many similarities, and there's so much power behind all of that. I'm so happy to see your family. And then, is this the aunt who just recently celebrated 100 years? Ma'am, may we just give you all the applause, because the, the life you've lived is more than we can dream of. And hopefully, we're making you proud by making change. So thank you. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, family.
Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes our program.
Thank you very much, councilmembers, and Happy Charlotte Bass Day, everyone. Thank you for being with us today. All right, so we can go next to public comment. We'll be taking public comment both here in the council chambers and on the phone. I will tell the folks on the phone, we have quite a few people signed up here in chambers, so there may be limited opportunity to take callers as well, but let's go ahead and see how much we can get through. So Mr. Clerk, if you could please read the instructions, and Mr. City Attorney, please.
Yes, Mr. President. As indicated on the agenda, members of the public wishing to offer public comment should call 669-254-5252 and use meeting ID number 160-535-8466, and then press pound. Then press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once admitted into the meeting, press star nine to request to speak. When it is your turn to speak, an automated Zoom voice will ask you to press star six to unmute. Let me repeat, call 669-254-5252 and use meeting ID number 160-535-8466, and then press pound. Then press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once admitted into the meeting, press star nine to request to speak. When it is your turn to speak, an automated Zoom voice will ask you to press star six to unmute.
To members of the public calling in, when it's your turn to speak, please state which of the agenda items you'd like to speak on. You have one minute to speak per item, up to three minutes total, and if you wish, one minute for general public comment. Please speak to the items before beginning general public comment. We'll tell you when your time's up. When speaking on the agenda items, you need to be on topic. Our goal is to get through as many speakers as we can. If you're not on topic, or if we can't tell whether you're on topic, you'll get one brief warning from me or the president. At that point, if you don't get immediately clearly on topic, or you again, off-topic, unfortunately, you'll forfeit your speaking time, and we'll move on to the next speaker. The items that are open for public comment are items 21 through 23. For members of the public calling in to speak, as you were told, when it's your turn, an automated Zoom voice will prompt you to press star six to unmute yourself. If you don't do so, council staff will prompt you once more, typically by reading off the last four digits of your phone number. At that point, you need to press star six right away, or unfortunately, we'll move on to the next speaker. Finally, there is a brief time delay between the live broadcast and the, live meeting and the broadcast. So two things. First, if you are listening on another device, channel 35, YouTube, when it's your turn to speak, please turn down the volume on the other devices right away. Because of the time delay and also feedback, it really creates a great deal of confusion if you're listening on other devices. Second, because of the time delay, please keep one ear to the phone. We want you to hear in real time when it's your turn to press star six. If you're only listening on another device, unfortunately, you may not hear quickly enough, and you may get passed over. And with that, Mr. President, we are ready to begin public comment.
Thank you very much. So I'm going to call out several names at once, and if I call your name here in the council chambers, just come on forward to the aisle on your left, where the sergeant is standing, on my right. And so I'm going to call first Lori Guggenheim, Peggy Lee Kennedy, Susan Rocha, and Barry And if you could, please tell me your name as you come forward, so I can keep track of who's spoken. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. My name is Lori Guggenheim, and...
Which item said you signed up for, Ms. Guggenheim?
Pardon?
Which items had you signed up for?
I'm here in support of 234118.
Please go ahead.
Thank you so much. Good morning, City Council. My name is Lori Guggenheim, and I am a lifelong Angelino. I am here in support of Councilwoman Tracy Parks' resolution, and I just feel it is essential for all of Los Angeles, but specifically the residents of CD11, to enforce 4118 in certain sensitive and essential public areas such as Councilwoman Park has designated. Parks, schools, libraries, the actual sidewalks need to be safe for all people and accessible and ADA compliant, so all people can access these resources. This is just common sense, it's fairness. It is consistent with Mayor Bass's initiative for inside safe. It is more humane for the unhoused as well.
You can go to your general public comment now for one more minute.
Thank you. It, it's not humane or safe to leave the unhoused, many of which who are suffering from addiction or mental illness. They shouldn't be left to just lie on the ground for people to have to ignore or walk around. That's not the kind of city we want to be. That's not what CD11 wants to be. We want people housed safely, but we also want all the public resources to be able to be accessed and enjoyed by all CD11 residents, particularly children. Children need to be able to walk into a park, or a school, or a public library, and not be afraid or simply unable to even gain entry. So I'm asking that you respect the interests and wishes of the majority of CD11, which overwhelmingly voted in, Councilwoman Park.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
All right, thank you. Peggy Lee Kennedy, Susan Rocha, and Barry Livingston, please. So if I called any of those names, just go ahead and come on up.
Can you tell us what name you signed up under, which items you'd like to speak
When you kick me out, call me Ms. Kennedy.
All right, which items had you signed up for?
I'm here to speak on general public comment.
Okay.
Item 22 and 23.
Okay, so you have two minutes for the items, followed by a minute for general. Please begin.
So LAMC 4118 is a racist, white supremacist, ableist law. There is nothing in it that says we're going to house you or supply any services, nothing. It just creates a zone. No sitting, sleeping, or lying. Targeting unhoused people who, guess what? They're people of color and disabled people. I resent that, and I resent anybody who seconds or makes a motion for 4118. It's a racist law. You are racist for doing it. And Price, Black History Month, seconding a racist law. And I don't care how many times you amend a racist law, it's still a racist, ableist law. Nothing says we're going to house you in that. Nothing says we're going to provide a service. Nothing in it is humane, is humane, nothing. It means law enforcement can remove unhoused people physically and criminally within an area. It creates no homeless zones, which is worse than a sundown town, because it's all time, not just sundown, all time. People of color, disabled people, you can't be there. And guess what? Disabled people need to sit more than. But unless you tell me to fucking sit down like I'm a child, I will not. I will not. That's ridiculous. You treat people like they're children in this room, telling me to sit down. I've been coming here longer than you. My mother came here before me.
Would you like to go on to your general public comment now?
Sure.
Okay.
Sure.
Because you seem to be going to general, so...
Sure. 1989, this city council stood in honor of my mother who died. Okay, where were you? None of you were here. I am fourth genera, third generation, my daughter's fourth generation, Venice. And I don't care how many of these people vote to get rid of poor people. It's wrong, and it's inhumane, and you people are racist for voting for it. I don't care what color your skin is. That's white supremacy. Skin is not kin. Do you hear me?
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy.
Thank you very much. All right, I'd like to call Susan, Susan Rocha, Barry Livingston, Matt Shaw, and Arnold Sacks, please.
So, please, Ms. Kennedy, we're trying to listen to Mr. Livingston, I assume.
Yeah.
Which item said you signed up for?
For item 22 and 23.
Okay, please go ahead. You have two minutes.
My name is Barry Livingston. I'm a voter, a resident, longtime, 46 years, in Council District Number Two. I support the Kocorian McCosker Resolution. There are many reasons that we cannot ignore what the impact of, of the situation, the homeless crisis that we have in our neighborhood, in the city in general, but I greatly sympathize with the problem that we have with, with so many homeless. And, but you cannot address every issue with one single or, or, you know, one resolution. I, you know, I'm a native Californian, I was born here. Everything about the city I love. Our area in particular, in Council District Two, is impacted by the end of the subway line. We are at the very end, as in Long Beach, which has the same problem. So we get an inordinate amount of transient homeless people that, that come out of the subway there and spread out into our neighborhoods. So we are actually inordinately, I believe, impacted. You know, obviously, the pedestrian streets are impassable in many areas, underpasses. I live in an area that's very close to an underpass. Some of the stuff that's collected by the people that are, that are congregating there, it's spilling into the street. It's a blind curve. I've come around it myself, and have narrowly missed hitting people, missed bicycles. So, you know, this is an issue that actually has to be addressed. Apart from the overall problem of people being displaced, I wish we could, you know, wave a magic wand and have that happen, or certainly have more resources of the city allocated towards the actual homeless problem and provide them housing and Medicare, medicine that is. But in the meantime, we can't, we can't ignore the fact that the city has to address some of the problems that are being created by this, this problem of...
Thank you.
Refuge and, and all of the people on there. Thank you.
Thanks very much. All right, I'd like to call Susan Rocha, Matt Shaw, Arnold Sacks, and Sean, please. Susan Rocha, Matt Shaw, Ar... Stop disrupting this meeting. This is like the third warning that I've given you. Please stop shouting out. We're taking public comment from members of the public who want to share their views with the council. It doesn't entitle everybody to make this a free-for-all. The people who are here and coming to speak at the mic are allowed to speak. Everyone else will show them respect.
Thank you. And which items did you want to speak on?
General comment and, is it 22 and 23?
Okay, so you have two minutes for the items, and then after that, a minute for general. The floor is yours. Please begin.
Okay. I was maliciously prosecuted by city attorneys, neighborhood prosecutors, Tamar and Gabriella Taylor, for crimes I didn't commit, I did not commit because Divine Savior Catholic Church took me to court and maliciously prosecuted me. They had no evidence, no witnesses, nothing, just because there's a priest that's going to get on the stand and prosecute me. I went to a jury trial, I was found not guilty. Now, your neighborhood prosecutors are out of control. If they maliciously prosecute and are that biased toward the Catholic Church. They didn't expect that I wouldn't plead ill, and I went to a jury trial and found not guilty. That's really cruel. And now I'm fighting six years later for my factually innocent, because not guilty is not good enough. And so why would they fight me on those two? That's absolutely ridiculous, that they would fight because my public defender missed my two-year deadline. So I'm screwed because the public defender's office missed my deadline, and the appellate courts and the superior courts have denied me.
So, so Speaker, that was obviously general public comment.
Okay.
That's fine. Do you want to speak on 22 and 23, which are the 4118 motions?
I want to tell you to stop malicious prosecutions.
Okay.
That should never have happened. I should never have had to go...
Okay, so thank you, thank you then, for that comment, and thanks. And now we'll, we'll need to go on to the next speaker, though. So thank you.
So Arnold Sacks, Matt Shaw, Sean, and someone who just left the initial A. That may have been Mr. Sacks. So just come on up and give me your name, please, so I know who's spoken.
So what name did you sign up under and...
Mr. Shaw, Matt Shaw.
Great. And which items had you signed up for?
Public comment in support of items 22 and 23.
Okay, so let's start with 22 and 23, and then we'll go into general comment after that. So you have two minutes for those two items, followed by a minute for general. Please begin.
Beautiful, thank you. Good morning, councilmembers, and thank you for your service. My name is Matt Shaw, and I'm a 25-year resident in Venice, asking you to vote yes on items 22 and 23 on your agenda today. It's easy to let people sleep on the street. It's hard to help them get off the street. Asking you to do the hard thing today and vote yes on items 22 and 23. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Arnold Sacks, Sean, Francisco Enriquez, and Irene Birmingham, please.
Hi, Mr. Sacks. Which items had you signed up for?
Oh, good morning, Mr. City Attorney.
Said you signed up for, Mr. Sacks?
I signed up for the two items that are open for public comment and public comment. What was it, 20...
It's 21, 22, and 23.
There you go, and closed session.
No, we already voted on those. So it's 21, 22, 23. So please begin.
Should I talk about my public items on the agenda first?
Let's do public, general public comment on the other items after. So let's start with those three items, 21, 22, and 23. Please begin with those.
Okay. 21 mentions homeless service authority. So I'm wondering, Mr. City Attorney, can you define the definition of a homeless? Because I've got a lot of documents here. This is from the county, and I know you don't do county stuff, but this says, "Addressing homelessness stemming from decades of institutional racism." homelessness stemming from decades of institutional racism. The Los Angeles Homeless Service Authority. So can you define the definition between homeless and homelessness? In 2017, there was a homeless initiative initiated by the County of Los Angeles. When did it become homelessness? You have a project room key, you have a project hotel key, room key and house key, but hotels give key cards out. Key cards are not room keys. Can you define the difference between a key card and a room key? Do you have a definition for that? I see you have underpass housing. I mentioned underpass housing a long time ago. There's a lot of underpass housing. Can you define the difference between a sidewalk, a right-of-way, the land between the edge of the sidewalk and the curb? What is that called? That's not the right-of-way. So you could sleep on that property, couldn't you? You can't sleep on a sidewalk, although you can sleep on a sidewalk. You can't sleep on a right-of-way, which is the defined definition of a sidewalk. That's in the city code. That's why you have so many problems with all the sidewalks, because they don't define it as a right-of-way. That's a real problem. That's why you have so many trip-and-fall accidents, because the city doesn't want to take responsibility for the shitty sidewalks, because they're not sidewalks, they're right-of-ways. Do you understand the difference? Have you read the codes?
We seem to be kind of veering from the items, Mr. Sacks.
Well, I am sticking with the items. I'm trying to define the def-- so that you understand what the definition is. I got a good idea what it is. The right-of-way is the legal definition of a sidewalk. A sidewalk is not necessarily a right-of-way, but a right-of-way is a sidewalk. The part of the sidewalk that runs over a driveway is what? Is it a driveway or is it a sidewalk, or is it a right-of-way? Can you define those definitions, Mr. City Attorney? You know what I'm saying? You get an idea what I'm talking about? You don't want to answer, that's fine with me. I can deal with that. I appreciate not hearing your voice. Makes me very happy. So I might as well wait. So we're not gonna talk about the homeless services versus homelessness.
You can go into general.
So a public comment. By the way, Mr. City Attorney, did you ever find your mind? I remember a couple of weeks ago, you said you lost your mind. Did you find it? Are you a city attorney? Are you a counselor? Are you a solicitor? They're all definitions for an attorney. So I have an idea. I know this won't go very far, but I heard earlier this year that the City of Los Angeles has done away with its pilot program for the Department of Public, Department of Water and Power. Why did they do that? Didn't they used to get a lot of money from the Department of Water and Power? Maybe they should make a pilot program for both the Department of Water and the Department of Power. Then people that are at risk of losing their apartment could use that money. The city doesn't want it. So they could use that money to help them offset the cost of hiring an attorney. You could have one pilot program for the power and one for the water, and you could have one for the owners of the apartments and one for the people that are losing their--
Your time's expired, Mr. Sacks. Your time has expired. Thank you. I'm gonna call Sean, Francisco Enriquez, Irene Birmingham, Connie Brooks, and Amy Huth, please.
Hi, Sean. Which items had you signed up for?
Yeah, good morning. How you guys doing?
Great. Which items had you signed up for?
Item twenty-two and gen-- item twenty-two, twenty-three, and general public comment.
You got it, please go ahead.
Item twenty-two, we should help the homeless. Sick of them being on the street. Sick of them, oh, do you have some change? Do you have some change? I'm not giving you my change. Just, I agree with Karen Bass. She should help them out. Uh, item twenty-- item twenty-three, forty-one eighteen, I don't like forty-one eighteen. General public comment.
Sure.
My organization, the Knights Columbus at St. Joseph's, is having a blood drive. Yeah, annual blood drive. The business should not be cashless. That's wrong. Dead wrong. I heard Sherman Oaks is cap-- parts of-- I know they've been robbed, but don't do cashless. Hire security for overnight. That would be better, because I would boycott them if they did.
Thank you, Sean. Okay, I called out a number of names. If you're among those, just go ahead and come on up.
Hi, Mr. Gab-- Gaber. Which items had you signed up for?
Twenty-two, twenty-three, and general public comment.
Two minutes for the items, followed by a minute for general. Please begin.
And you signed up as A, I assume?
Yeah, that was--
Okay.
Um, yeah, so I'm in-- so vote no on both of these forty-one eighteen motions. Forty-one eighteen is an act of, is a law of hate. It's hate towards unhoused people. That's literally all it is. It's just rich, you know, NIMBYs who don't like having to see, you know, unhoused people on their drive to work or whatever. Um, and they're just, you know, so instead of act-- so what I'll just say is, if you don't like seeing unhoused people, then how about you get housing for the unhoused people? Like, that's just common sense. That's just, like, you know, if you don't want people there to be unhoused people, then how about you make it so they're not unhoused anymore? They have housing. That's just basic common sense. So let's look at these forty-one eighteen motions. One of them is from Officer Tracy over there. Um, yeah, so I see she fi-- someone finally told her that the city would end up in all kinds of lawsuits if you made the beach a forty-one eighteen zone, so. So instead, you just made it, you added even more. So let's, let's just vote no on the whole thing. No forty-one eighteen. The other one is from the Unifier, Paul Krikorian, who apparently, despite trying to move the city past the racist policies of Nury Martinez, is just introducing his own forty-one eighteen motions. Um, so that includes making the entire North Hollywood Metro Station a forty-one eighteen zone. That is, that's going to kill people if you make that a forty-one eighteen's ocean, motion, zone. That will kill people, because there are people who are at the, um, for--
You're going to general.
If you, you may have not seen it, but when there was a storm last time, people got shelter at the forty-one eighteen's, at North Hollywood Station. So if they had gotten forty-- so if that becomes a forty-one eighteen zone, those people will be stuck out in the rain, and they will die. If you vote yes on these motions, you are complicit in death. That's death. So vote no on both of these motions. There's, that's just common sense. Vote no. Um, and the whole, all of forty-one eighteen needs to be abolished. Kevin needs to resign. I know you're back there somewhere. Um, we're still demanding that. Paul, you also should resign. Why are you seconding his motions? That's just racist. That's racist. Why are you, you need to resign from the council, too. Both of you, fuck you both.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Thank you. Mr. Francisco Enriquez, followed by Irene Birmingham.
Hi, Ms. Hi, sir. Which items had you signed up for?
Item twenty-two and twenty-three.
Please go ahead.
I'm here to support the resolution, the Krikorian Resolution, two items, actually. You know, I'm a longtime resident of West Tuluga Lake, voted in every election over the years, including many, many times, to raise my own taxes to help the homeless. And even though we've done that, things continue to be bad. So I think steps like this need to be taken, and I support them. You know, our neighborhood is surrounded on Riverside, on Byland, under those overpasses. There's people that hang out there, do drugs, and they walk around our neighborhoods, our neighborhood like zombies on drugs. So they, you know, I don't even let my fifteen-year-old daughter walk the dog by herself, because I'm afraid of this thirty, forty-year-old man on drugs walking our streets. This morning alone, you know, my wife was gonna go to work, and the mirror in her car was broken, the side mirror, for no reason. So, you know, like I said, I voted several times to support the homeless, to raise my own taxes. I care about people, and I care that they're well taken care of, but steps like these need to be taken to support our communities, to, for the safety and well-being and health of our neighborhood and our cities in general. Thank you.
Thank you. Great, thank you. Next speaker is Irene, Irene Birmingham, followed by Connie Brooks. Ms. Birmingham, floor is yours.
Hi, which items had you signed up for?
Hi, my name is Amy Huth. I support agenda number twenty-two.
Can you move the mic down a little bit, so we can hear it? I think you said twenty-two and twenty-three?
Correct.
Please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Amy. I support agenda number twenty-two, Krikorian McCosker Resolution. I'm a resident voter of West Tuluga Lake and Council District Two. The definition of a sidewalk is a paved walk for pedestrians at the side of the street. Please allow our community to walk, to walk safely on sidewalks within the locations that you are voting on today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you say your name was Amy or Irene? Amy? Okay, great. Then Irene Birmingham is next, and Connie, followed by Connie Brooks.
Hi, Ms. Birmingham. Which items had you signed up for?
Twenty-two, twenty-three.
Great, please go ahead.
Good morning. My name is Irene Birmingham. I'm a voter and longtime resident of West Tuluga Lake, Council District Two. I support the Krikorian McCosker Initiative, the relative to designing locations in Court District Two enforcement. I also support twenty-three, four-one-one-eight, S-1, CD eleven. I thank you for the opportunity to get up here and support this, and I hope that the city is able to follow through on this and support it. I've been here twenty-two years, and things have changed in the residents where I am. Recently, we've had people come who are not in our secured building. They're not residents, tenants. They sleep in our courtyard. They knock on our doors, and we, the children are afraid to leave the building. People swim in our pools, and it's, it's a little unnerving. So if we could find a place for these people where they could get shelter and help and support, that would be wonderful. They don't deserve to be mistreated, and leaving them without care is mistreatment. And there are housing, there is housing available. So I do appreciate the city in approaching these people to let them know that there are these homeless, that there are support systems for them. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Connie Brooks, followed by Rosemary Douglas.
Hi, Ms. Brooks.
Please don't yell out in the audience.
Hi, I'm Connie Brooks. I am speaking on twenty-two, twenty-three, and general public.
Very good. You have two minutes for the items, followed by a minute for general.
Good morning, council. Forty-one eighteen sites do not criminalize homelessness. They simply recognize the city's duty to provide equitable access and protection in specific locations. Here's one example among many. The Venice Boardwalk has public restrooms. To ensure equitable access, we made large stalls for people with disabilities--
Ms. Brooks, can you hold on a minute? Camille Lewis, you have been warned repeatedly, and you were interrupting another speaker who has come down here to give her public comment.
The Venice Boardwalk has public restrooms. To ensure equitable access, we made large stalls for people with disabilities. We also included changing tables for parents with babies. But here's the reality. Those bathrooms are frequently unusable by anyone with a disability or anyone with a baby. That's because we have unhoused people living in boardwalk restrooms, and they lock others out. Access for the many is blocked by a tiny minority. There's also low-income senior housing on the boardwalk. My friend's eighty-five-year-old mom lives there. She's battling cancer and a heart condition, or she'd be here today to tell her own story. For years, she's had a large encampment right outside her bedroom, and when I say right outside, I mean tents attached to her window railing. People in that encampment are often active all night, preventing her from getting much-needed sleep. Outside, she uses a walker, and her sidewalk access is frequently blocked. Now, the standard answer, the standard answer to these issues is to say that we need more outreach. But the boardwalk gets continual outreach from St. Joseph's Center, who are very good at what they do. Almost everyone living on the boardwalk or beach has already refused outreach services multiple times. Many have been in and out of housing multiple times. We know this, because we talk to them about it. That's why we're begging you to vote yes on items twenty-two and twenty-three. We absolutely must find better ways to help unhoused folks who refuse services. But while we figure that out, we absolutely must prohibit encampments at sensitive sites where children, families, and seniors deserve safe and equitable access every bit as much as unhoused people deserve our help. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Ms. Rosemary Douglas, followed by CU. Rosemary Douglas? Ms. Rosemary Douglas, are you here? Not-- She left, okay. Next is speaker signed up with the letter CU. CU here? Nope, followed by Chi Loon. Chi Loon will be followed by Michael McKay.
Really, really--
Okay, I'm sorry. Ms. Lewis, Ms. Lewis, you need to leave. Ms. Lewis, that's your tenth warning, you're out. Sergeants, please remove Ms. Lewis immediately. We'll wait until she's left for you to speak.
So, sorry, Speaker, but we want to make sure you're not interrupted while you're speaking. Ms. Lewis, you've been asked to leave, and you're not doing it. You've been ordered removed. And the sergeants are gonna escort you out.
You've been asked to leave via rule twelve, please leave.
Ms. Lewis, don't have a conversation with others, just go.
Ms. Kennedy, please, one more word, we have to kick you out as well. I hear you speaking from up here. Okay, Ms. Kennedy, you're out.
Ms. Kennedy, you've been ordered to leave.
Out. You've had a dozen, you've had a dozen warnings, and you're disrupting the meeting. Please leave.
Okay, you've been ordered removed pursuant to rule twelve. You're subject to rule seven, too. Please go. We have a speaker at the podium who is waiting to talk, and we have to wait for you. Please leave. Okay, so the woman in the kind of neon green jacket, you need to be quiet as well.
Okay.
This is your warning.
Thank you.
Okay, hold on a little bit, Speaker, just while we make sure you're not--
Okay, you're subject to rule seven.
Ms. Kennedy is now shouting as she's being escorted out.
You're wasting everyone's time here, as speakers and the council and staff. We need you to leave this meeting. You're costing time and money for all of us. Please leave.
Ms. Kennedy, go. I've heard you accused just now the sergeants of bullying you. They're doing nothing of the sort. They're standing a distance from you. You're the one that's slow-walking out. Okay, I'm very sorry, Speaker. Which items did you want to speak on?
I'm speaking on twenty-two, twenty-three, and public--
I'm speaking on 22, 23, and public comment.
Okay, so you have two minutes for the items, followed by a minute for general. Please begin, the floor is yours.
Okay. I am proud to not be a generational front person from Venice or California. I've lived in many places and I urge you to vote yes on the enforcement zones of 4118 as this is an important step in assuring the safety of Los Angeles children and elderly. As a representative of over 100 parents from the West Los Angeles area, I can attest to the fact that our public spaces are vital for our children's activities and commitments, and we need to ensure that these spaces are safe and secure. We must not forget our most vulnerable citizens are those who are our children and our senior citizens, and they're trying to resolve, and by trying to resolve our mental health crisis on our street, this helps all of them. Most importantly, thank you for wanting to stop people from dying on the streets and getting people indoors and cleaned up. This is the only way to remind them of the value that they have within themselves. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you, and thank you for your patience. Okay, I'd like to call Michael McKay, Julie Mioli, Deborah Bartlett, and Denny Dugan,
Hi, so if you could remind us of the name you signed up under and which items you signed up to speak on?
Yes, good morning. My name is Deborah Bartlett.
Okay.
And I'm speaking in support of Resolutions 22 and 23.
Excellent, so Ms. Bartlett, you have two minutes, the floor is yours.
Yes, okay. I thank you for the opportunity to speak. Good morning to all council members. We've had wonderful speakers, so I'll just add this too for your consideration. I am a longtime resident and voter of West Toluca Lake and Council District Two, and I do support the resolutions 22 and 23. I asked Jeff, who is living on the streets in our neighborhood, "Why don't you pick up after yourself?" And he answered, "Because I'm lazy." This is a motivation problem with Jeff. We have to be motivated to make changes, to stop indulging in behaviors and habits that are harmful to us. My mother took her last pup smoking cigarettes the day before her surgery for lung cancer. Resolution 22 and 23 is an important and necessary step in helping bring an end to the condition and pattern of living that is causing the deterioration of people who are living on the street and the neighborhoods in which they live. Resolution 22 and 23 is the surgery, so to speak, that will have an impact to restore the sick and bring wellness and wholeness to all concerned. Success is a result of obedience to laws. When you obey the laws, success is inevitable. Success begins with identifying a problem to solve. I hope that we all have the wisdom to solve this problem together.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry, can you tell me your name again, please?
Pardon?
Tell me your name again, please.
Deborah Bartlett.
Thank you very much.
Like the pair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I'd like to call again Michael McKay, Julie Mioli, and Denny Dugan, please.
Hi, which items did you sign up for?
22 and 23.
Great, so you have two minutes, please begin, sir.
Thank you. My name is Denny Dugan. I'm a voter and a longtime resident of West Toluca Lake, 20 years, in Council District Two, and I support the resolutions 22 and 23. We have a very active neighborhood and once a month, we meet at my house and we have at least 15 to 35 neighbors. We go along Riverside in the underpasses and we collect between 30 and 55 garbage bags full of litter left from the homeless. Now, we are all wanting to help the homeless, but we do think that these propositions and resolutions can make a big difference, so we are in support of you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any of the other names that I called who are ready to speak? Michael Mc...
Michael McKay is left.
Michael McKay is left, okay. Julie Mioli, Deb Bartlett, oh, I'm sorry, already spoke. Denny Dugan, I'll call Julie Milligan, Tess Taylor, and Doug Hamblin, please.
Hi, Mr. Hamblin, what had you signed up to speak on?
Hi there, good morning.
Hi.
Thank you for having all of us have a chance to speak on this. I'm also in Council District Two, West Toluca Lake, and I'm here in support of measures 22 and 23. I think they're very common sense, they're overdue, and they are very practical in terms of trying to incentivize people that need help to get it. I doubt that they're going to do it by themselves, but I think it's a very important first step. I just want to mention briefly that in that regard, my late wife, Clarice, was a deputy public defender in what you probably all know is the largest mental health court in the country, Department 95. She was extremely compassionate, practical, forthright in caring for people who could not care for themselves. After 30 years there, she oversaw the implementation of what's called AOT, Assisted Outpatient Treatment, commonly known as Laura's Law. And she had no illusions about the difficulty that we all face in getting people who desperately need treatment into treatment. The laws, the conservatorship programs that exist currently are stacked against this. So, most mentally ill people, quite a few she knew suffered from this anosognosia, the unwillingness to have insight into their illness. So I encourage you all to keep moving forward with this and, you know, we pride ourselves in living in California, a very progressive state. I would argue it is not progressive to allow these people to continue to live on the street and fight and die. So let's all take action and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And I'm sorry, sir, was your name Doug Hamblin?
Doug Hamblin.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Julie Mioli, Denny Dugan, Tess Taylor, Julie Milligan, and John Dugan, please.
Hi, if you would please tell us which name you signed up under and which items you want to speak on.
Good morning, my name is Tess Taylor.
Okay.
I'm signed up under Agenda Items 22 and 23 and general public comment.
Very good.
And I've provided documents to Council Member Krikorian's Chief of Staff to support my testimony.
Thank you very much, please begin.
As noted, my name is Tess Taylor. I'm the president of the West Toluca Lake Residents Association, and I'm very grateful to Council Members Krikorian and McCosker for authoring this resolution, 4118, in Council District Two, and I'm here to fully and vigorously support it, as is our entire community, at least 25 of whom have shown up here today. And I'd like to note that a number of public comments that have been made via the City Clerks Connect website have not rendered as they should, for some reason I'm unaware of, at least a dozen. So, we all wish to be charitable and generous when needs arise and unpredictable things happen, but we don't want opportunism to be the state of affairs when charity is extended and resources are not rebalanced. We want to focus on what is fair and just, but one group of people's priorities cannot preempt everyone else's. That is neither fair nor just, it is not sustainable, and we cannot tolerate that. Council President Krikorian said on July 1st last year, quote, "We have provided enough shelters to accommodate the needs of every single unhoused person in CD Two," end quote. And so we have done our part in this district. We have tiny homes, we have shelters, we have bridge housing, and I believe some of the first storage facilities in order to accommodate belongings of homeless individuals and many, many services. I have personally connected dozens of homeless people with these services and created a homeless resources directory for residents of my neighborhood and my community and my neighborhood council district to enable them to understand where they can direct people in need, which I do personally myself. We do not expect overnight solutions, but we also do not want a permanent state of emergency and disrepair with every city resource strained. I have personally led huge neighborhood cleanups every month since October 2021.
You have another minute, please continue.
We have at times filled two enormous city sanitation trucks with the refuse that we collect from these encampments. This is no joke. And I would like to point out to Ms. Kennedy, who has left the room, and the young man with the red hair, that to call this resolution, this 4118 racist, is to drain that comment of its significance when it is actually not racist. It causes, it makes actual and real accusations of racism less severe. So I would caution them not to use that soundbite when they are countering a move to help people. So I thank you again for putting this resolution forward, Council Members Krikorian and McCosker, and I also support the same resolution in Council District 11, Council Members Park and Rodriguez. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'm going to call out some more names, and if I call your name, just go ahead and come on up to your left-hand side there. Julie Mioli, Denny Dugan, Julie Milligan, John Dugan, and David Wheatley, please.
Hi, so if you could please tell us your name and which items you signed up for?
Agenda 22 and 23, my name is John Dugan.
Great, please begin.
I'm a voter and a longtime, 30-year resident of West Toluca Lake, Council District Two, and I support the Gregorian Resolution. I have a house, small house, my wife and I. I'm a 30-year teacher, schoolteacher. We saved up enough money to get a down payment to move into West Toluca Lake. We got the least house in the best neighborhood, and we've loved it, we've been there for 30 years. About 10 years ago, the house next door to us became vacant, and there was no protection around it, and the owner abandoned the property. Then some homeless people moved into the house, they were starting fires in the house to cook their food and to, they were doing drugs in the house, and they were causing us to be very afraid for our house right next door. We were so afraid that we got a dog, so that the dog, because the fence had fallen down between their house and our house, the fence had fallen down, and we were afraid that they would start a fire and maybe burn down our house. And we worked very hard to get the down payment and to live in this neighborhood, and I support the resolutions because I think that they need help, and I'm all for that, but I also need my public safety and my wife and my son's public safety. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Julie Mioli, Denny Dugan, Julie Milligan, David Wheatley, please.
Hi, so if you could please tell us what name you signed up under and which items you want to speak on?
Sure, the name is David Wheatley, item is 22 plus general, please.
So you have two minutes, please go ahead.
Terrific, thank you. Thank you for having this forum, to be able to speak. I think we're getting a good example from the people to my right, those who have left and those who are still here as to what we're dealing with, with the homeless advocacy and the homeless themselves. Right this moment, I'm concerned that one or more of these people will come up and attack me. Am I paranoid? I don't think so, because I saw one of the people here assaulting one of the officers and bringing their hand and extended finger, trying to make a comment within a foot of the officer's face, and now that officer has to go home thinking about that. I think this really shows that having these encampments moved is a really good idea, and I think the sooner we get on that, the better. I'm told that a typical person who's on assistance gets $300 a month, and if they have a medical condition, then they get $800. It looks to me like a person living under a bridge, it's so grim, it's no wonder they're on some sort of medication, legal or otherwise, on some sort of drugs. I'm told that $300 is not enough to buy enough drugs, so they have to steal stuff, and that $800 is not enough either. In our so-called housing crisis, people can't get apartments for this amount of money. So I think as long as this particular side, and I'm gesturing to my right, continue to advocate on their behalf in such ways as to disrupt this entire proceedings means we really need to take a harder line on this. Thank you for giving somebody 10 times to knock it off. I think it really needs to be two times, three at the most, and I think we should not be kowtowing to this kind of disruption and disarray. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Julie Mioli, Denny Dugan, Julie Milligan, Karen Collier, and Movses Marjanyan, please.
So if your name was called and you're still here, just come on up and the sergeants will show you to the podium.
And let me also call while they're coming up Eleanor Wallen and Hakob Dischjan, please.
Hi, so would you remind us of your name and which items you signed up for?
My name is Karen Collier.
Okay.
And I am here regarding item number 22.
Okay, please go ahead.
Thank you. As I said, my name is Karen Collier. I am a voter, and I have been a longtime resident of West Toluca Lake for 40-plus years. I support this resolution. I have been on the board of the West Toluca Lake Residents Association since it was founded in the 90s. We would have Neighborhood Watch meetings monthly, and by the LAPD, we were known as the four safest blocks in the neighborhood, in the area. But because of the encampments that we have going on right now, that can no longer be said. It's not safe for us anymore, and it's definitely not safe for the people living in these encampments, seeing that they gather so much stuff that it goes out into the street, and we have a blind area there of a curve where many times there's shopping carts in the middle of the street, bicycles in the middle of the street, and the people are in the middle of the street. And it's unsafe, and I appreciate you listening to me, and I thank you, and please support this resolution by President Krikorian. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, if you'd remind us of your name and which items you signed up for?
Good morning, my name's Eleanor Wallen, and for items 22 and 23...
Please begin.
I am a 33-year resident and voter of West Toluca Lake, Council District Two. I'm also on the board of the West Toluca Lake Residents Association. I walk to work daily on Vineland Avenue under the 134 overpass, literally in the road with traffic, to avoid the detritus, fluids, and tents that occupy the sidewalks, often spilling over the curbs. I have extinguished three smoldering fires. I used to walk to Weddington Park along Vineland Avenue. I used to walk to Tahanga Village along Moore Park and Riverside Drive. I used to walk to North Hollywood Park along Tahanga Avenue. This situation is not freedom, it is not humane, it is not safe. This situation is not freedom. It is not humane. It is not safe, and it is not healthy. I strongly support these resolutions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wallen.
Thank you very much. And I'm afraid I'm only gonna be able to take about 10 more minutes of public comment here in the chamber, so I'm gonna call out some names. If you could come on up and be ready to speak, and then maybe, you know, if you agree with what people have said previously, maybe you can just say me too, but I'm gonna try to get through as many as we can in that time. So, again, Julie Mioli, Denny Dugan, Julie Mulligan, Mulligan, I'm sorry, Hakob Dischjan, Movses Marjanian, and Dee Bartlett, please.
Hi. So, if you'd tell us your name and which items you signed up for?
Hi. My name is Movses Marjanian.
Okay.
For Resolution 22 and 23.
Please go ahead.
Yeah. My name is Moses Marjanian. I'm a resident of West Toluca Lake in Council District 2. I support this resolution. I think that the people to the left of me, the residents of West Toluca Lake, have done all they can to help this issue. I think whoever doesn't support this resolution and leaves people sleeping on the streets is not normal. I think we need to fix this issue, and if the housing has been provided and people aren't going to housing, this leaves it as a mental health issue and a drug issue. So, I support this resolution.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Hakob Dischjan, Anya de Porbe, Steve Wagner, and John Reimers, please.
Hi. So, when you reach the mic, if you'd please tell us your name and which items you signed up for?
Sure. Hi. My name's Anya de Porbe, and I signed up for 22, 23, and general comment.
The floor is yours. Please begin.
Okay. First of all, I'd just like to notify everyone that I'm a CD5 resident, but a stakeholder in CD11. So, primarily, I'm here today because I'd also like Councilmember Yaroslavski to hear that I expect her to support 4118 because she, I supported her, and she, based on the idea that she realized that 4118 struck a good balance between the general public and our unhoused while we're trying to figure out exactly how to help them. Like many Angelino families, I have a teenage son, and we limit his screen usage, and we use all of these public spaces between both districts. So, we feel threatened when there's encampments, and we expect a park that we're supposed to be utilizing as a park, but it's actually being used as a lawless residential zone. So, we would really appreciate if you supported 4118. A couple of examples of things that we've encountered in these parks are being chased with a vodka bottle by waking up a person on a dirty mattress, unfortunately, right next to where the Venice Bridge Home is. And it made me question, why isn't she in the Venice Bridge Home, lying on a clean mattress? And all I can really come to the conclusion is, is that she decided she doesn't want to be there. So, I don't know what the resolution is, but I feel like the public deserves to have their public spaces back without having to encounter being chased by vodka bottles. My son has also witnessed open drug use and being screamed at, you know, just playing sports in any of these in most parks. So, my point would be just please support 4118, and I would really hope that CD5 Councilmember Yaroslavski also notes that as well. It's really important to us and my neighbors. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Okay. I'd like to call Hakob Dischjan, Steve Wagner, John Reimers, Arthur Whipchlak, Stacy Cigara-Bollinger, Lionel Mares, and Craig Ribero, please.
Hi, sir. So, if you'd tell us what name you signed up under and which items you signed up for?
Yes. My name is Steve Wagner. I signed up for item 22.
Go ahead.
And I am basically here in support of my neighbors and the Krikorian resolution. Like several of the neighbors have mentioned, we've had an ongoing problem with trash, uptick in crime, and believe that this really needs to be resolved. So, I know we're short on time. Thank you for listening to us this morning, and I've been a resident since 2011, not as long as many of the others, but we definitely care about our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming down.
John Reimers, Hakob Dischjan, Arthur Whipchlak, Stacy Cigara-Bollinger, Lionel Mares, and Craig Ribero, please. If you're among those folks, just go ahead and come on up.
Hi. So, if you'd tell us the name you signed up under and which items you signed up for?
Hi. I'm Stacy Cigara-Bollinger. Items 22, 23, and general public comment, please.
The floor is yours. Please begin.
So, I brought some information to council on Friday, and I had an officer present you with it, and I had a lot of information that was relevant to today. For example, the cost to provide supportive housing, according to a recent study, is about $10,000 per resident per year, while the cost to criminalize our unhoused residents is about $30,000 per resident per year. So, besides being unethical, inhumane, immoral, racist, and ableist, this doesn't make any sense for our budget. Think about why people are unhoused. It's because they can't afford housing. A lot of folks have come up here and said how long they've lived in Toluca Lake, how long they've lived in Venice. I want to know how much they were earning when they bought their house and how much they paid for it. Housing affordability is why people are on the streets. Apparently, we only care about the disabled population and the condition of the sidewalks when we want to criminalize people, because there's a five-year waiting list for ADA compliance on Los Angeles sidewalks. So, no one's worried about disabilities or all of the elderly people who are unhoused, all of the children who are unhoused. We keep on hearing about children and the elderly, and that they need our help, and they do, but there are children and elderly residents who don't have shelter. And this idea that they have an abundance of resources is simply not true. And again, this was all in the information that I brought to you on Friday that apparently no one read. We have about 2 and 1/2 vacant units roughly to every unhoused resident in Los Angeles. So, while we think about how we're gonna get affordable housing built, we also need to look at what exists and why it costs so much, and why so many landlords are making so much passive income. So, with that, I'll move on to general public comment.
Sure, absolutely. Please go ahead.
So, I spoke recently at City Council about being a survivor of domestic violence and some patterns of abuse in government. So, we witnessed another pattern today with a grand gesture. Grand gestures are something abusers do to their victims to try to rekindle the relationship, say, "Oh, look, I love you. I'm doing this big thing for you. My ex used to do big gestures on Valentine's Day. We had a big Black History Month grand gesture while sitting in chambers as Kevin De Leon." We were promised no business as usual when Kevin De Leon was outed for the racist that he is. Now, City Council hasn't kept their word on that, but I'm a woman of my word, and I promised I wouldn't stop singing so long as he's there. So, you get to hear my singing voice again. Kevin De Leon is a racist, and you are an evil racist. Happy Black History Month, everybody.
Thank you. Next person?
Thank you. Next speaker, come on up, please. And just if you could let me know your name, please, as you come up.
My name is Arthur Whipchlak.
Okay. Which items had you signed up for?
Items number 22 and 23.
The floor is yours. Please begin.
Thank you. My name is Arthur Whipchlak, and I'm a resident of West Toluca Lake for the past 10 years. I'm, I serve on the Greater Toluca Lake Neighborhood Council, and I'm a voter in the district. Over the course of the 10 years, our sidewalks, our public areas, our public parks have become unusable. And the residents in our neighborhood, as I've mentioned before, have started neighborhood cleanups, where we go out into the underpasses, the sidewalks, the parks, the wash, and we clean as much trash and, and, you know, offer as much assistance as we can to these homeless that live there. And every single month, there's, there's just more trash, and none of these public spaces are usable, and these, it's affecting our lives and, and, and it's just sad because this is our neighborhood. We've been there and we've just seen it just kind of deteriorate, and it breaks my heart because we want to do something and, and it, nothing happens. And so, it, we would like that these public spaces be usable, and, and we can just, you know, live in, live in our neighborhoods. That is the end of my public comment.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hi. So, when you get to the podium, if you'd tell us which name you signed up under and what items you want to speak on?
22 and 23.
Okay, and you are?
My name is John Reimers. I'm a 23-year resident of Venice and a high school teacher. So, I don't have much to add to what's been said, except my agreement with those who are supporting 4118. So, what I'd speak to is the politics of the matter, which is, I'm a supporter, I'm here primarily as a supporter of more shelter beds and more supportive housing, both in my neighborhood and around the city. And I have to say, it's gonna be impossible to persuade my friends and neighbors to support those efforts if we can't get something as simple as 4118 on the books. I think most people would be surprised to hear that it's not already illegal to camp within 500 feet of a school or a library. And so, you know, if politics is the art of the possible, if we're serious about moving the ball down the field, this is something that has to happen. Without it, I don't see how we're gonna rebuild public trust, given what's happened over the last few years. And that is something, too, which brings me to the second question, which is enforcement. In Venice, I was happy to support the bridge housing that's been in operation now for several years at Main and Dudley. But I know a lot of the residents around there feel that they were given a promise of strict enforcement in the area around the shelter, and that promise was not kept. And so, I think in order to rebuild the public trust and to, to persuade our neighbors to be more supportive of more housing down the road, we have to get 4118 on the books. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Come on up.
Hi. Which items had you signed up for today?
General public comment.
Great. Please go ahead.
Thank you, council members. Thank you for having me today. I'd like to comment on Council Fire 22-0560, Fund of Municipal Lobbying Ordinance. I just want to thank Jamie York for her hard work in rallying the neighborhood councils. I'd like to thank Glenn Bailey and, and everyone at the neighborhood council who have been partying hard for this. The 501(c)(3) currently are being used by big business interests to astral turf, and the rising, that nonprofit exemption is in direct contradiction to what 32 neighborhood councils said they wanted and needed for the city. So, I hope that the city council will, will vote yes on the municipal lobbying ordinance reform and the next, when it's on agendas. And I just want to thank the city for working with Secclavia. I'm very happy that we're gonna have 80 events this year, and I look forward to having more events in the future. Thank you for working in collaboration with Secclavia, and just, hopefully you do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hi. So, when you get to the microphone, if you'd remind us what name you signed up for, under, and what items?
My name is Craig Ribero, and the number was 23.
Okay. You're a little bit soft, so if you'd speak a little louder, that'd be great.
Name is Craig Ribero.
Oh, yeah. The mic seems a little low for you. Hang on one second. The sergeant will...
Regarding the 4111. Oh, sorry.
Okay. So, please go ahead.
Just asking all members to vote yes on 4118. For our streets in Venice have been horrific, and we've all seen too much, and I think getting it cleaned up would be amazing, and it's cleaned up a lot so far, but we can definitely, just to keep it this way would be fantastic. We've been like threatened in numerous things. We don't want to hear it, but we want the help for the unhoused, to get the help they need, and that so it's safe for the residents, moms, babies, dogs, and everybody. And Tracy Parks, thank you for all that you've done. We appreciate it and love. And this comes from, I have a village of people behind me that are not here today that couldn't come for whatever reasons, but I speak on their behalf, and thank you so much for everything. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Okay. The only other name that I had called, I think, was Hakob Dischjan. So, if I haven't called your name, I'm very sorry. I appreciate your coming down. Thank you very much. We've taken well over an hour of public comment already, and we still need to go to the phones. So, everyone who came down to the council chambers, thank you very much for your participation, and we'll only be able to take 10 or 15 minutes of comment on the phones. So, let's go ahead and take the first caller, please.
First caller. What items would you like to speak on?
Good morning. I'd like to speak on item 23 and public comment and 22.
Sure. So, you have two minutes. Go ahead.
Greetings, city council members. My name is Paula Driss, president of the neighborhood council of Westchester FIA. Our board voted to approve and support Council File 23-4118-S1 Resolution, Park Rodriguez. We are in support to implement and enforce LAMC Section Code 4118, which includes several sites within our footprint and surrounding communities. As a community, we have been asking for this enforcement since 2021, and sadly have been repeatedly ignored. This enforcement complements the services currently being offered to our unhoused every day. We ask that you vote in support of this motion as compassionate elected stakeholders for the whole community. Thank you kindly for your attention to our request. As a personal private citizen of the city of Los Angeles, I would ask that you pass item 22. And as a public comment, I appreciate you trying to maintain quorum and composure inside. I would love nothing more than to come and be there in person. It's just still really scary, and so I hope you can continue to make in red so that we can feel comfortable coming there to speak to you in person. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Understood. Glad you were able to get through on the phone.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Next caller. What items would you like to speak on?
I'll speak on, I'll speak on all available items and general public comment, please.
Sure. So, there are three items that are open for public comment. It's 21, 22, and 23, so you have three minutes for that, followed by a minute for general. Please begin.
Thank you, Mr. Pablo. Good morning, public. The homeless crisis was and continually, is continually caused because we have a corrupt and incompetent government. Stop trying to put the blame on the people. These are helpless people. Moving them 500 feet, disrupting them, putting them out from frequent underpasses does not help anybody. His IQs drop dramatically? How does moving them 500 feet into the elements help anybody, including your neighborhood? The problem is our corrupt, incompetent, self-serving government. The waste. Look at these 30 people standing around four hours a day, three days a week. You don't see that at other city councils. The city of LA, where I grew up, is the homeless capital of the earth. There is no more unhoused people on the entire earth. The root cause is our corrupt, self-serving, incompetent government. Krikorian, parks, the rest of these clowns who looted our HHH funds at $700,000 per unit. We have one on the agenda today, $537,000 per unit. That's where we should be focusing, not the homeless, unhoused, helpless people, evicting them from underpasses. This is insanity. You are not gonna be safe. Your children aren't going to be safe. The danger is your corrupt government, not, not these people. Yes, they are a problem, but they are people. Tracy Park, racist LAPD Tracy Park, and racist clown Paul Krikorian want to give away homes for cats at City Hall while evicting people from free... Hall while evicting people from freeway underpasses, bragging we have a hundred percent, uh, success rates and giving away cats at City Hall, where you have a minus sixty thousand percent success rate at housing the homeless. It is just insanity. It's a damn lie that we have, that they have provide homes and possible homes, shelter for every person. One guy got up and just got up and said, uh, the homeless move into, uh, evic-, um, vacant housing. They're damn lies. They have not provided. They are looting. Item number four, today's agenda, five hundred thirty-seven thousand dollars a unit.
You can go into general if you wish.
Standing here. Corrupt, 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 corrupt black community sellout Marquise Dawson requested a separate vote on these items. He himself has voted, uh, for forty-one eighteen motion. Let's put that on the record. Heather Hutt has her own forty-one eighteen motion she's bought through. This corrupt sellout, Marquise Dawson, who has done nothing but for the black community, has been lining his pockets with corrupt, uh, Herb Weston and soon to go to prison, lock him in jail. Mark Ridley Thomas constantly voted for LAPD increased budget. Half the budget the City of L.A. drained instead of putting it to the people of the City of Los Angeles. These coons, these sellouts do not represent the black community. Most of these are minority people. You see them sitting there, but they do
Thanks very much. Thanks very much. Your time's expired. Next caller, please.
Next caller. What items would you like to speak on? Caller with the last four digits, eight-eight-two-four. Please press star six to unmute yourself.
So caller with the last digits eighty-eight, twenty-four. If you're there, please press star six right away. Otherwise, we will have to move on. So I think we better move on.
Hello?
Ah, hello. Which items would you like to speak on?
Uh, I'll speak directly to the public since this unprofessional city council can't pay attention on all items and general comment.
So you have three minutes for items twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, followed by a minute for general. Please begin.
Item twenty-two is another homeless person's abuse forty-one eighteen motion by dictator and homeless abuser Paul Krikorian. Krikorian is nothing more than a bullying butcher petty dictator by bringing this homeless person's abuse motion against my fellow Los Angeles city, citizens. How dare Director Paul Krikorian complain about the so-called dictator attacking the Armenian territory when dictator Paul Krikorian is attacking L.A. homeless communities with this and fully supporting all other forty-one eighteen homeless abuse corrupt city council motions? If petty dictator humanity butchering Paul Krikorian had homes or resources for the community of people he and Kosker and Tracy Park are evicting and traumatizing in this forty-one eighteen legislation, I don't believe that they would even provide it to these human beings, my fellow L.A. residents. Norrie Martinson cloned petty dictator Paul Krikorian obviously feels good by abusing other helpless human beings. These petty little people now want to start animal shelter at corrupt City Hall. No homes for humans, though. No freeway underpasses for humans, but homes for cats. Dictator Paul Krikorian and Tracy Park and all of their signers on these motions are inhuman. When an impotent little man he is on spit and humanity with this forty-one eighteen homeless abuse. History will spit on the satanic grave of dictator Paul Krikorian. How dare dictator Paul Krikorian complain about the so-called dictator attacking American territory, Armenian territory, when he himself is attacking Los Angeles homeless communities? Through this forty-one eighteen homeless person's abuse motion, petty power dunk Paul Krikorian, who regularly calls or tells our Los Angeles citizens to sit down, be silent, and throws them out of corrupt City Hall, is now quenching his thirst for dictator power and throwing helpless homeless people from freeway underpasses and other minimal places of shelter. Petty dictator Paul Krikorian will be judged by history for his forty-one eighteen motion and all other forty-one eighteen homeless abuse motions he has signed. His cursed name to by throwing L.A. citizens out into the elements to die, to die. Paul Krikorian does not have shelter for the five homeless communities he is evicting in this motion. Instead, he has signed his cursed name onto seven hundred thousand dollar per unit HHH bond ripoff.
Go to general if you wish.
Okay. Real black history is exemplified by the Black Nuthufians, the Black Moors, the Black Egyptians, the Great Pyramids, and all of our magnificent accomplishments versus the parade of Coon Tom Sambo's we witnessed here Wednesday before last. There was not one word of black history mentioned by any members of this Coon Parade spectacle. We witnessed a Coon Parade of self-serving Uncle Toms, Price Hut Dawson, and the criminal Herb Weston glorifying his little short self and a ridiculous naming of city steps for a person whose main accomplishment has to in, is black homelessness. The black community has no representatives by these self-serving pimps and looters of our black community like Marquise Dawson, Herb Weston, Heather Hutt, and everybody in the city pays for it, not just black people, everybody.
Thanks very much. Let's go to the next caller, please. We'll take two more callers, and then we, uh, need to move on with the agenda.
Next speaker. What items would you like to speak on? Speaker with the last four digits seventy-seven, ninety-nine. Please press star six to unmute yourself.
So speaker with digit seven-seven-nine-nine, if you're there, press star six right away, or else we'll have to move on.
Hello?
Hi. Which items would you like to speak on?
I would like to speak on general and twenty-two and twenty-three.
Okay. So let's start with twenty-two and twenty-three. You have a minute for each of those, so two minutes, and then general. So please begin.
Thank you. In support of twenty-two, um, Councilmember Hernandez has, looking back to Council Files, Councilmember Hernandez has twenty-eight forty-one eighteen designations. CD two will have twenty-two. CD three has thirty-five. CD five, thirty-five. CD six, fifteen. CD seven, eighteen. CD nine, twelve. CD ten, fifteen. CD twelve, twenty-seven. CD thirteen, twenty-eight. CD fourteen, seventeen. And CD fifteen has requested over two hundred, so it's hard to tell how many designations they actually have. Any council members that cannot support today's motion should immediately file motions rescinding any designations they currently own. In support of twenty-three, in December twenty-one, Venice Beach was named the most dangerous city beach in the county and in the country, and visitors, including those from inland areas of Los Angeles, have not returned. It is a travesty that the beaches of Los Angeles have gained a reputation of a place where you would not want to bring your family. That is why it is imperative to take all reasonable steps to show persistence in keeping the space accessible to all. Venice Beach Recreation Center has the most valuable natural asset that the city and people of Los Angeles have, and it is imperative that the ingress, egress to Oceanfront Walk is kept clear of obstruction that impede beachgoers. Please support twenty-two and twenty-three. Generally, I would like to say the majority of Los Angeles voters support the idea of reasonable time and place restrictions as long as the offer of shelter is made, and that is consistent with the Boise ruling. Sloganeering regarding sweeps, criminalization, and moving people around are unfounded. Leading indicators show the mayor's insight safe initiatives can be a success.
Go to general.
The request, the request, the list of requested sites has been meticulously chosen and is in no way overly broad. Allowing all council members to designate which areas are most critical to provide equal access to public spaces is imperative for a balanced citywide approach. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next caller, and this will be our final caller, please.
Next caller. What items would you like to speak on?
Uh, item number twenty-one, I don't know, actually twenty-two, twenty-three and general public comment, please.
Sure. So you have three minutes. So there's three items, followed by a minute for general. Please begin.
All right. Thank you. Um, hi. Good morning, council. Actually, good afternoon right now. I just want to say, finally, something is being done to clear out the homeless people on the streets. Um, like I said before, the homeless people are causing and creating a biohazard. Defecating, urinating, um, shooting up, uh, drugs with needles. And, um, what's, uh, interesting and sad is that the public is walking past the homeless people, stepping on urine and feces, and bringing those diseases into their home, which is completely unacceptable. And the good thing about, uh, getting, um, this forty-one eighteen going is the fact that, um, we're trying to send a loud and clear message that, um, sleeping outdoors is unacceptable. It is time to, um, move indoors. And the fact that, um, Los Angeles is a major city, and it's one of the top tourist destinations. Now, one thing people need to understand who are opposed to forty-one eighteen is that, um, Los Angeles thrives on, uh, revenue from the tourism industry. Now, when tourism, now when we have tourists coming to Los Angeles, they see a lot of homeless encampments, um, homeless people defecating, homeless people shooting up. Word gets spread out to not come to Los Angeles because this is what's happening in our, in the City of Los Angeles. And when you, when word gets spread out, that's going to be a huge loss of revenue for the City of Los Angeles because Los Angeles thrives on the tourism industry that brings in revenue to the city. And, um, I also like to, um, ask that you guys, uh, make an amendment to also include, um, um, Highland Avenue underpass and the Colanga underpass in Hollywood. Those are two locations I like to also say. Um, one more thing I'd like to, um, ask from the city council is that, um, I'd like you guys to post, um, uh, give homeless people a seventy-two hour warning to clear out their, um, belongings, um, or else it's going to be, um, seized and disposed of. And that's something I'd like to also, uh, ask if you guys can do that as well. Put a warning or something like that. And, um, and give the homeless people, um, um, a notice that their property has been seized, um, after seventy-two hours. If it's been sitting there, stored, um, untouched or anything like that, that'd be a great idea, um, so that the homeless people at least can retrieve their belongings.
Oh, yeah. You can go to your general public-
Do you want to go to general?
Um, yes, yes, I do.
Okay. One more minute. Yeah, go ahead. One more minute.
Yes. So the idea that I have is, um, um, if, if sanitation seizes, um, items from homeless, there needs to be a sign posted saying, uh, uh, if your item's been seized, call this number, um, where you can retrieve your items. Because, you know, homeless people do have, um, personal belongings such as, um, their photo ID or any other personal belongings, pillows, clothing items. Um, and I like to make an amendment so that, um, they do have, um, they do have like time to reclaim their items within a certain period of time when sanitation, um, uh, clears their items off the streets. And that's something I would like to see if you guys can do that as a-
All right. Thank, thank you very much. Thank you, uh, caller. Thank you to everyone who came down to chambers today and for those who called in on the phone. I know there are probably more who, who would like to speak, but, um, I'm very sorry, we weren't able to take everybody, but we've taken public comment for about an hour and a half more, I think. Um, so we need to move on with the agenda. So thank you all very much for your participation. That will close public comment for all agenda items and general public comment. Uh, Mr. Clerk, are there items before us that we can vote on now?
Mr. President, the council may now consider items fourteen and fifteen. Call special by Councilmember Rodriguez for comments.
Very good. Um, then I'll go ahead and call on Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, item fourteen and fifteen, and for members of the public who may not be aware, uh, is related to the conversation around having independent redistricting reform. I want to start with a phrase that guided my entire life, and it came from a man who taught me the lessons because of an experience that he had when he was fighting to lead cultural change in a department that resisted his presence, my father, who came onto the L.A. City Fire Department after the adoption of the consent decree and was among the first Latinos on the department at the time he, uh, he joined, uh, in nineteen seventy-five. He would always say to me, "Miha, actions speak louder than words." And it was those, it was that phrase that has guided so much of the decisions that I make. And so often, look, we are imperfect human beings. And often, we are confronted with trying to make decisions that are, you know, being consistent can sometimes be difficult. But doing what is right is never, there's never a wrong time to do what is right. In the aftermath of the events that occurred in October, there were a number of conversations that ensued about the need for reform and redistricting. There was, on the meeting of October eighteenth, a conversation around the need for an independent redistricting process based on a motion, item twenty-four, that Ms. Rahmon had introduced, that indicated that that item hadn't seen the light of day for more than a year. In that conversation, on that October eighteenth meeting, there were conversations that ensued related to, uh, the need for this independent redistricting reform. And among the comments that were made, Mr. President, was a reference to, uh, the, how the state and the county actually had a redistricting process that was independent and, uh, and removed members of this council from, or members of the legislative bodies interfering with that redistricting process. And so here we are today with two items that are before us. One that I introduced that hasn't seen the light of day since I introduced it back on October twenty-eighth, that is being recommended for noting and filing without proper discussion. But adjoining that motion today is item fifteen, which is a motion introduced by Mr. Krikorian and Ms. Rahmon that seek to oppose the very same intervention that the state led by Senators Laura and Isador Hall, that created an independent redistricting process that removed the legislative body from influence and affecting the outcomes of their redistricting process, creating in, in, a truly independent process. My concern with item fifteen, and obviously, item fourteen to note and file at this point, I'm not going to fight. I know how the deck is lined up. Even though I have a problem with the conflict of the actions not reflecting the words. And the reason why I'm bringing this up is because we're taking opposition on a bill that would in fact create an independent redistricting process that cannot be manipulated by this body. We cannot ignore that many of the members, both of this present and prior council, excluding obviously the new members that hadn't had an opportunity to participate in, were among the very individuals that were part of manipulating the redistricting I voted against every single amendment that came out of that ad hoc committee on redistricting. Some of the members that are on this motion were highly involved in that. And I said no to them all. Because if we're going to truly have an independent redistricting process, and there was other citations on the audio tapes that implied other interests- other citations on the audio tapes that, uh, implied other interests to, of individuals to, uh, quote-unquote, "blow up" the comi- the citizens' commission's redistricting map, I was not gonna be complicit in enabling that environment. Because I too often hear in my head, and I'm proud to have that voice in my head, saying each and every day, "Miha, actions speak louder than words." I think it is critically import- important when we talk about the restoration of public trust that we do so with a really clear lens about what that looks like. And that we truly remove the influence and personal agendas because, at the end of the day, when the, of course, the language and, you know, again, it was so much of what has transpired has been so wrong and so, uh, has caused so much distrust of this local government. And if we are truly to create trust and restore the trust of the public, we need to recognize that we lost because of the actions of several members. We continue to cede that trust because of the actions and engagements of some of the members that have been, have served currently or previously on this council. Obviously, this is not an easy thing to talk about. Because I recognize where people align. But the truth is, I have a problem with speaking one thing and doing another. And I think at a moment, when I reflect about what transpired as a, and resulted in the final maps, was very much not compliant to the Voting Rights Act, undermined the representation based on the Voting Rights Act for communities of interest that particularly harmed the Latino community, but what is espoused as being something entirely different. So, for that, colleagues, uh, I'm gonna urge, I, I totally agree with, at this point, note and filing item fourteen, which was my ask for this body to consider advocating for the state legislative intervention that would slow wa- wouldn't slow-walk reform for this body, but actually accelerate reform based on the calls and cries from the public to say that we should have an independent redistricting process, and that is not something that we should slow-walk if we're gonna talk about reform. And so, since that item is currently pending as a result of Senator DeRazo's bill, I'm okay with that item being noted and filed. But what I cannot sit idly by and watch is this body's opposition to the Senate bill, which was previously celebrated, the independent, uh, redistricting processes that have been adopted both by the state and by the county at the hands of the state legislature that created it. Because we know that people will be acting within their interests rather than the interests of the public. And so with that, colleagues, I ask your consideration to oppose and vote no on item fifteen on today's agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rodriguez. Um, just a, a couple of points on this, members. Um, first of all, I think it's important that we set the historical context a little bit because there seems to be, um, some confusion about what, in fact, this council did during the last redistricting. To have stepped back from the broken, corrupted work of the redistricting commission and not try to address the blatant defects that were made by a commission that included registered lobbyists, paid public relations representatives, uh, who worked and depended on government. To have stepped back from that and said, whatever they, those lobbyists and others come up with is okay, um, would have been an abrogation of the responsibility of this council. Um, so, you know, to, to continue to say, "Well, we, we have an independent redistricting commission, and they should, we should treat them as being independent," is false because we don't have an independent redistricting commission. We have it, until now, we've had redistricting commissions that are filled with, you know, politicized people uh, with whom members of this council have direct contact to tell them, you know, what they want to have delivered by political professionals in the so-called independent redistricting commission. It is a disaster. It is, it is almost literally the worst imaginable circumstance we could have, where we have this fig leaf of independence when everyone in this chamber knows and everyone in the public knows that the political professionals that were part of that commission were not acting on behalf of the people, they were acting on behalf of political agendas. So, you know, i- i- it is always the right time to do the right thing. And the right time to do the right thing is right now, which is why one of the first things I did as your council president was to create the Ad Hoc Committee on Governance Reform, which is why the principal agenda item before that ad hoc committee right now is this independent redistricting reform, once and for all, to scrap this broken system that we have and truly create an independent redistricting system that we have nothing whatsoever to do with. That is what we are putting forward. Now, if you believe that it's always the right time to do the right thing, then don't abandon your responsibility to the state legislature. Don't say, "Someone, please stop me before I kill again." It would be irresponsible of this body to say, "The state legislature should decide this." This is this body's responsibility. And whatever we do, we will be putting before the voters to be approved by the people of Los Angeles with a charter reform that cannot be changed by this city council. What the legislature may attempt to do, God only knows. But I know this. It is absolutely inappropriate for the state legislature to meddle in the election affairs of a charter city. We have a city charter, which the people of Los Angeles have enacted, and that governs our elections, and that governs what we do, not the whims of politicians in Sacramento. And before we get too carried away with the, you know, supposed independence of Sacramento in doing this, let's keep in mind that the reason that there's an independent redistricting commission redrawing the state legislative districts in this state is because of common cause. It's not because the legislature decided, you know, "We legislators are so committed to independent redistricting that we're gonna put this on the ballot, or we're gonna enact this." No, the legislature was dragged kicking and screaming to this by common cause, and the people of California in Prop eleven in two thousand and eight enacted the state redistricting commission. So, county, sure, counties are a body of state government. Charter cities are not. Charter cities are fundamentally different than counties in their relationship with the state legislature. So, I would just submit, members, do not abandon your responsibility to politicians in Sacramento. Do your job. And our job is to put forward something that the people of Los Angeles can be proud of. A, an, a redistricting commission that does not have our hands on it, that is not touched by our fingerprints, that doesn't carry the political water of some group or another group at the expense of other groups, but rather takes into account the best interests of the people of Los Angeles in redot- redrawing our districts. So I ask for your vote in support of our resolution opposing SB fifty-two. Mr. McCosker.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. As someone who just recently came onto this body, uh, this, uh, is a tough call for me personally. I will say that I'm compelled by a lot of the elements in SB fifty-two. I think it has elements that make a lot of sense for an independent redistricting commission. But as someone who, now nearly twenty years ago, served on the redistricting, excuse me, served on the Charter Reform Commission, it's really important to me that we do, you know, stick up for the provisions of the charter. I mean, that is terribly important to me. I mean, the freeholders of the, of this city established the charter provisions, for right or for wrong. And I think that our redistricting process within the charter is not serving us well today for all of the reasons that we've read about. I'm also compelled by the distinction between counties and, and a charter city. I mean, it's very, very clear that a county is a subdivision of the sta- of the state, and it makes sense that the state would step in and conduct that redistricting, uh, establish that redistricting process, that redistricting framework. I'm not going to ask the city attorney today because I think I have, um, made my personal decision, but I'm not even certain that the state legislature has the authority to establish a redistricting process for a charter city that has a charter provision, for right or for wrong, that actually establishes that process. All that being said, we need to move. We need to get on this. And I have every faith in this body that we will continue to work out the details and present to this body, and I hope, uh, around the city, have some listening sessions where we talk about what an independent redistricting commission looks like for the city of Los Angeles, and that we can do that on a cycle that is coming up quickly, and present something in the next, you know, election cycle. So while I, there's a lot about the argument that I agree with, and there's a lot about the DeRazo bill that I agree with, I think it makes sense for us to place our own provision in front of our voters. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Thank you. Um, again, thank you, Mr. McCosker, and I, I recognize your role, uh, historically in the conversation on charter reform and how important it is for us to preserve, uh, that authority. Unfortunately, I've also seen the exploitation of that very authority, which is why that when we talk about transparency and the public's trust, that this isn't a slow-walking moment. This is one that calls for swift change. And yet, here we are, trying to slow-walk it. Trying to slow-walk it for those that benefited from the changes that were made and guided by members of this council. And that's my problem and concern with this, which I'm sure you can appreciate. Uh, it's, it's one where, again, I go back to, "Actions speak louder than words." And the words that were espoused on the eighteenth were among individuals that celebrated the fact that the county had an independent redistricting process, that the state had an independent redistricting process. And yet, here we are, saying, "Well, you know, we'll come to the table, and we're gonna find, by the way, the loopholes, uh, to exploit it yet again," because we know how that, how those charter amendments come forward as well, to potentially continue kicking the can down the road, which in good conscience I can't do. So, with that, colleagues, I still urge you to vote no on item fifteen, and hope that we can deliver for the people of Los Angeles what they aspire to have, is a local government that they can trust and that will do the right thing consistently, not intermittently. Thank you.
Thanks. On the issue of slow-walking, let's be clear on this. This charter reform will be on the twenty-twenty-four ballot, period. And let's be clear on this, too. The product that this council develops through the Ad Hoc Committee on Governance Reform and through the work of the fifteen members of this council, uh, will be done in the public's eye. It will be done with complete input from all stakeholders across this city, whereas anything passed by the state legislature will be done in Sacramento, in the Capitol Building, with no public comment other than "I support" or "I oppose," because that's what happens in Sacramento. So, we will have a process that continues to be robust. We will have a, a process that continues to be the kind of debate that we had in committee on this very issue, um, where, once and for all, we were able to take up the efforts that Councilmember Rahm and I and others had, uh, wished to be taken up, but had been stalled on a shelf for over a year before we initiated this through our committee. So, um, this will be moving forward, and it will be on the twenty-twenty-four ballot. Councilmember DeLeon.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. President.
You need, you need to be silent. Okay, I'm sorry, Andrew Grabner is ordered removed from the meeting under Council Rule twelve. Andrew Grabner, Andrew Grabner, be silent, and you are ordered excluded from the room. You are leaving the council chambers for disrupting this meeting. Please leave. Please leave.
So, sorry to the public. Uh, we've got enough noise in here that we need to wait for a while. Okay, sorry about that.
Mr. DeLeon?
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. President and, and colleagues. I do very much appreciate this very robust discussion on the issue of redistricting. And I think none of us disagree with the need for an independent redistricting commission, especially to strengthen the public trust in our representative process. As has been discussed, as is being discussed right now, independent redistricting commissions are not new. In fact, under my leadership as state senate president, we did pass, Ms. Rodriguez made a reference to Senate Bill nine fifty-eight, Ricardo Lara, and Isadora Hall. We did pass this measure, which did establish the L.A. County's first independent redistricting commission. So I'm proud to have supported the creation of that independent commission. This same commission just drew recently new lines for L.A. County supervisors. And there's a universal consensus that the commission and their work was an all-around success. In short, the Senate bill delivered what it promised for the largest county in the nation, a fair and transparent process. The only people who were opposed to the bill back then, in twenty fifteen, were the supervisors themselves. The same arguments presented today were the same ones used to oppose that specific bill. Fortunately, the bill passed and produced a fair process that entrusted L.A. County residents with decisions over their own redistricting desires, and upheld the tenets of the Voting Rights Act of nineteen sixty-five. That commission, like the one being proposed in SB fifty-two, was made up of L.A. County residents. The commission held public hearings and took ample testimony from county residents. Colleagues, the Senate, and some folks here have served in the Senate, is giving the residents of the city of L.A. a gift in Senate Bill fifty-two for a fully independent process, an opportunity to quickly, quickly establish an independent commission made up of L.A. city residents to hold public hearings and redraw lines, reaffirming the public's trust. Instead of opposing this Senate bill, we should be engaging them in a very collaborative way, as Riverside County recently did. We should be asking the Senate to cover the cost of the commission. We should be asking the Senate to fund a robust committee engagement and provide the necessary resources for a special election to put a charter amendment on the ballot. That is an option that we have right now, as you engage in negotiations, as opposed to taking a hard-line perspective on this issue. Rushing to oppose the bill before the Senate is even scheduling its first committee meeting is not only premature, but may only serve as a red flag to members of the public who already distrust the process altogether. SB fifty-two does not oppose the goals and interests set by this council, ad hoc committee. In fact, I believe it complements them. We have an opportunity collectively, and through the leadership of our president, because I do enjoy the robust discussion, without a doubt, and the diverse opinions we have here today. But we do have an opportunity, aside from the ad hoc committee, and I appreciate Tim McCosker's perspective as a lawyer. And I'm not a lawyer, so when it comes to the charter and the difference between the county and... county as a subset of the state overall. But it gives me a little pause also, too, when one of the foremost constitutional lawyers, experts in the nation, Erwin Chmurensky, also the dean of Berkeley Law School, opines that this could pass muster in a federal court. So that gives me pause right there. Also, through the political process, when we have Senator Marilena Durazo, Assemblywoman Wendy Carrillo, Senator Menkivad from the Valley, also Assemblymember Laura Friedman, Reggie Jones Sawyer, and Miguel Santiago, members of the legislative body who either represent all of the city of LA or parts of the city of LA politically, are going to move this forward, come hell or high water. I know how this process works. I think a handful of us on this body understands how this process works. And when governor puts that to pen, and if the city attorney litigates it, and with Erin Chmurensky and others, this might be going to the court, but it may pass muster. That's why we do have an ability, an opportunity that's before us right now. Now, again, I appreciate this robust debate and the diverse opinions that we have here today. But if we want a transparent process, and we want to do it quickly through an independent commission, we have it before us right now, through Senate Bill 52. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you. That'll take us to item number 14. The recommendation is to note and file that item. Let's go ahead and open, oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Soto Martinez?
I, I want to speak on behalf of 99% of the people in this room, and just kind of say what it is, but you truly have no shame, Kevin DeLeon. I mean, to come here and speak on this subject, the very subject that you had your hands in is beyond me. Is, is this a Hollywood movie that I'm, I'm watching right now? I, I know I'm out of order, but you gotta call it. I'm sorry, you are such a sinvergüenza. And you know what? Some people are polite, and I'm not going to say it, but I'm going to say it. You truly, truly have no shame. I, I, I am beyond words right now. The reason this happened is because you were in that room. It was you making those decisions to chop up people's districts. You come here, you think you have credibility on this subject? It, it's, it's, I, I don't know what to say. Like, just, you're, es un sinvergüenza, like totalmente.
Thank you. Mr. DeLeon, Ms. Rodriguez, and then we're going to close debate.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank you very much, Mr. Soto Martinez, for your comments as well, too. Don't tell me what, what to, tell you what to do. Because I'm going to address the elephant in the room. I'm actually glad you brought that up. CD 8, which is a great district, a historically black district, a voting rights district, protected, changed from the 2012 maps to the current maps by less than half of 1%. The change primarily was including the Crenshaw Mall. That was the change. CD 10 specifically, what is a coalition district, because there's not one minority group that has a majority. They only have a plurality. That only changed when they consolidated Little Ethiopia and Koreatown. Those were the changes, in fact, specifically. What the district wanted, what the community wanted, because Koreatown was split into four council districts. Those changes, in fact, empowered communities of color. In the end, let me be very clear, because there's been a false, inaccurate narrative that's been continuously perpetuated for political purposes. In the end, at the end of the day, when the rubber hits the road and the dust settles and when it's etched in stone, those were the changes to those specific districts. Since we're discussing facts and objective measures, there was a concerted effort, in fact. There was a concerted effort, in fact, by the commission to create a Latino Opportunity District in the San Fernando Valley. That, in fact, was blown up altogether. That was blown up. Facts are facts. It is very difficult sometimes because it's inconvenient for the narrative. Despite unfounded accusations that the process was tainted or biased or legally, illegally influenced, the reality is that the process was followed in accordance with the law and the city charter. In fact, thousands of Angelinos gave testimony, and this council collectively, this council collectively voted on a 13 to 0 votes, on the 13 to 0 vote, to approve the maps that we have today. In fact, one of the authors in opposition to Senate Bill 52 had the largest change. After dismissing three commissioners, had the largest change of jury-mandating. So that's why I want to emphasize Senate Bill 52 that's before us, it's a choice. You either support it or you don't support it, but it is an option. So know what you say, my friend, before you say it. Deal with the facts, not with the narratives or the political propaganda agenda. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, I just wanted to correct what was, was misstated, because what actually effectuated the change of the adopted maps from the redistricting commission was changed by members of the ad hoc committee. So I just want to be clear how it actually changed. It was by the members of the ad hoc committee. I was not on that committee. I voted against every amendment that came out of that committee, but it was that committee that adopted, by and large, the most substantive changes to the citizens-appointed commission. Moreover, it was members of this council that were rapidly interchanging commissioners when things didn't appear to go their way. So let's just say it. If we're going to talk truth, let's talk truth consistently, not intermittently. So I, again, I remain opposed to, to item 15. I think if we want to talk about independence and doing, and accelerating what that is, we need to, we need to speak truth to that power. But I, I am not going to be complicit, again, in allowing this to suggest, for those that espouse the most independence, their hands were the most involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris-Dawson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to thank Mr. Rodriguez, council president, and Mr. Soto Martinez especially for their comments, and call with urgency the question right away as my cup runneth over.
Thank you very much, and we shall do so. So on item 14, the recommendation is to note and file. Please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
12 ayes, 1 no.
Thank you. On item 15, the recommendation is aye. On that item, open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
11 ayes, 2 noes.
Thank you. That will take us next to item number 11. And item number 11, I'd like to order referred back to the Plumb Committee without objection. That will be the action. That'll take us next to item number 21. As amended by motion. So is there anybody wishing to be heard on item 21? Seeing none, let's go ahead and open the roll on that item as amended. Close the roll, tabulate the votes.
13 ayes.
Thank you. That'll take us to item number 22 next. Does anybody wish to be heard on item 22? Seeing none, let's go ahead and open the roll. Oh, anybody on the right? Councilmember Yaroslavski, did you want to be heard? Please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to be voting no today on both 4118 motions. It's not clear to me that we, as 15, have come up with a consistent way of enforcing it. It's not clear that we're offering, making credible offers of housing and services as we apply it across our 15 districts. It needs to be part, in my belief, of a coordinated engagement strategy. And what's happened in Council District 5, I think, is exhibit A for what happens when you enforce 4118 without credible offers of housing and services. We have something like 50 interim beds in 5, and 4118 has been used over the last year and a half in more than a dozen cases. And it just blows up encampments and spews people around. Homelessness has gotten worse in my district. And I don't think that if we're enforcing 4118 without credible offers of housing and services, we're doing, we're doing what's right, and we're not actually solving the problem. We're just engaging in an elaborate shell game. And rather than being a judge saying, "I think here we have the beds and here we don't," I'm just going to vote no on both of these. I'm introducing a motion today that will explore the effectiveness of 4118 as it's been applied across our city. I think it's important that we have a consistent program in place for how we enforce it that involves credible offers of housing and services. Otherwise, we're just kicking the can around, and that's not solving anything. So thank you very much.
Anybody else wishing to be heard on this matter? Councilmember DeLeon?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I know that of all the council members, you were the very first one who started Tine Home Village in the San Fernando Valley. I, I did want to just confirm on the 4118 that you have before us, that for the five encampment sites that you have publicized, and I know that there was a robust discussion from the audience in support of file, current item number 22, that you have housing or beds, at least, for those individuals, for those encampments.
Thank you for the question, Councilmember. For every site, both in this motion and that has previously been indicated in, in previous 4118 motions in my district, we have engaged in outreach that has not taken months, it has taken years, of consistent street engagement for many, many months. We have built in my district enough temporary and bridge housing to occupy, to provide shelter for every single person who was listed in the homeless count, in the previous homeless count prior to COVID. And there is capacity in those facilities that I built in my district to accommodate the needs of every single person living in those encampments. So I appreciate the question. And, and I should state more broadly, this isn't just about my district. When this council enacted the amendments to 4118, the thrust of, much of the thrust of the debate was about the need for a robust street engagement strategy to be built into this policy. It has been, both in the policy and as it's been applied. So I would urge your aye vote.
So what I'm hearing, my conclusion is, is the answer is an unequivocal yes, which I think undermines any narrative with regards to 4118s, that you're kicking the can down the road and just shifting folks from one place to another place. You have to make tough decisions and leadership calls. That's why specifically I appreciate when we have 4118s, that folks who do it find the housing units necessary to move those folks, put a roof over their head. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Yaroslavski again?
Just to be clear, it seems like you've done everything right in your district. As a new council member, having the first vote on 4118, I just want to know whether or not the program's working across the board before we start adding new ones. So it sounds to me like you're the model for how we do it right. Not clear to me that it's being applied that way across the district. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other members wishing to be heard? If not, let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
9 ayes, 4 noes.
All right. Thank you. That will take us next to item number 23. Does anybody wish to be heard on item number 23? Seeing none, let's go ahead and, oh, Councilmember DeLeon?
Actually, I have the same question for Ms. Park as well, too.
For these individuals, and I want to be very clear, we will lead with a robust engagement and offers of housing. In my first full month in office, we have demonstrated the commitment to compassion and the urgency of this moment by already housing over 150 people in the district. We do have the beds available, we have the resources, and this is something that our community has asked for. But again, I want to be clear, we will not rest, not me and not any member of my team, and we will not do enforcement until every individual living on the street has been offered the opportunity to come inside.
So there's a clear connection right there with the beds, with those individuals who you're moving forward with, through the 4118.
Yes.
And again, let me just reiterate, the reason why I say this is important, because this is the hard work that actually is done, not the Twitter work that is done, because I'll be very clear, when we had the Echo Park clearance, you know, as controversial as I may be, more than half of them, if not two-thirds, came to CD 14. So as we're winding down the Grand Hotel, I'm responsible financially to find the beds for them, unless the current council member for CD 13 will welcome back to CD 13 and find the housing beds for them. So when folks don't do the work that's necessary to put the roof over their head, all they do is switch it around, and they kick that can down the road into other people's districts. So it's a good point you make with regards to doing a robust exhaustive audit to see how effective it is and how it's not effective. I think it's been an instrument, a tool that's been used to move folks who are unhoused into other districts, because folks want to tweet about it, but they don't want to do anything about it. Thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Park?
And if I could just respond one more time, I am well aware of our legal obligation to lead with offers of services and housing. It is also our moral obligation, and it is what we will do in my district.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. If there's no other members wishing to be heard on this item, let's go ahead and open the roll.
And for the record, Mr. President, this item is amended by motion, Park Price.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, so on, on this item as amended, let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
9 ayes, 4 noes.
All right. Thank you, members. Mr. Clerk, what's next before us?
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
Posted and referred.
The desk is clear, sir.
All right. Members, any announcements? Councilmember Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, tomorrow's going to be a very special day in Pacoima, the North Valley Broncos Square dedication. And North Valley Broncos was an African-American Little League team that made it to the World Series. They made history in Pacoima when their parents, when, when they weren't allowed to play in other Little League games, the parents actually pooled together resources to lease and rent a baseball field in, in my district in order for them to play, because they weren't welcomed anywhere else. And so tomorrow, I'm really proud, at the corner of Drone Field Avenue and Osborne Street, right across the street from Hanson Dam, we will be unveiling that square with many, and celebrating many of those members that we honored last year. But we will be bringing them again to, to commemorate this special occasion with the dedication of that square. So we'd like to invite everyone to join us tomorrow at 11:00 a.m. at Drone Field in Osborne. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember McCosker?
Thank you very much. Just really briefly, in the 1-5, we're having a series of town halls. And tonight is our first town hall, which is in Watts at WLCAC. For our myriad of watchers and listeners out there in TV land, it's at 10:00, 9:50 Central Avenue, starting at 5:00 p.m. It's just an open house for everyone who lives and works and plays in Watts. Thanks.
Thank you. Other announcements? Any other announcements on my right? Announcements on my left? Seeing none. Are there any motions to adjourn? On the right? Any motions? On the left? All right. Seeing none. Thank you all very much, members. Very good meeting. We are adjourned.